So I'm going to call this meeting to order. Good morning, council. And the first item of business is the adoption of the agenda. At the very bottom, referring to the courtesy kitchen or the community kitchen. I don't know. Community kitchen seems like a generic terminology. But it is the courtesy kitchen that I think is on the agenda there.
Okay.
Minor change. Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda? Counselor Corlick, Counselor Thompson, and all those in favor. Put your hands up. Perfect. Okay, and the minutes of April the 6th. And I have a motion to adopt the committee of the whole minutes from April the 6th. Counselor Corlick and Counselor Krug. All those in favor. And moving us right down to the Boundary Regional Chamber of Commerce. We have an update on how things are going and also an introduction there to their their new marketing and revitalization coordinators. So moving on to that item on the agenda. I see Jeff and Sarah. So I don't know. I'll just throw it to you for introductions, Jeff and Sarah. Counselors, obviously, Redd Alder, a minute.
Okay, hello. So I am Jeff Farrell, with Chair of the Boundary Country Regional Chamber of Commerce. And I think the main thing we're here to do today is to introduce Sarah, Sarah Desdale, who we have hired upon as a contractor to, it was initially, well, it still is, but it's the marketing and revitalization is the contract position. And it was really aimed around the Roger Brooks plant. So to initiate some of those downtown revitalization pieces. Plus, obviously, with the current situation, it's a bit of a curveball. So she still has a lot of those tasks from that plan on her radar. But the first month has been a lot different than anticipated, but she's been doing really great. I know, Sarah, you have a presentation, right?
Yes, it was sent out. Does everyone have that in front of them or do you need to share a screen?
I think sharing would be better.
Yeah.
Yes, Sarah, Sarah, when you, Sarah, in the future, when you share it, it would be good if you shared the whole presentation as like a PowerPoint PDF or something like that, because the Google Docs I can't share with council easily.
Um, you know what, though? I will, because Sarah's going to do the bulk of talking here. So I will end up sharing that. Sarah, you do have it open though, so you can.
Yeah.
Like an active base, I'll hand it off to you if you want to get running. It might take me a few seconds to get it up, but you can go ahead now.
Sure. So basically, I'm just going to go through a recap of what we've been working on for the last six weeks or so, end of March, beginning of April. Well, Jeff pulls up our notes here. But the first thing that we really started to do was kind of look at what was happening with the COVID situation and start doing some promotion for, to help and support local businesses. That's kind of where the majority of our work has been around. The first thing that we started was shop local program called the EZ10. And if you're not familiar with that, basically, it was a program to encourage residents to shop local safely. And for every thousand, or sorry, for every hundred dollars they spent within the community, they were receiving $10 back in boundary bucks, which is our local gift card program. To date, so we've run that for the month of April. To date, we've received about $10,000 worth of receipts. So that translates to about $1,000 worth of boundary bucks. And in turn, those gift cards will go away and be spent again in the community as businesses that accept boundary bucks. I'll just, I'm up here now. I'll just let me just slide it to there.
I'm curious if I click presented, it's going to disappear. Let me know if this disappears. Or do you still see it?
Perfect.
I'm seeing it.
Okay.
So that's been the shop local program. Then again, was running from the first of April to the end of April. And we're currently still accepting receipts until May 15th for the April part. On social media, we created a Grand Forks and Boundary Business Committee Facebook page. And this was created just for business owners to share concerns and kind of semi-private communication about what was happening with their businesses and questions that they had. We also started a Boundary Country Open For Business social media Facebook and Instagram pages. And those were available to the public. And on those sites, we've been sharing businesses that are open and how they're open, because many of them have adjusted their services for the community. But that's been a really great way to promote, you know, local businesses that stayed open during the last month.
And I'll just jump in quick. I think this probably applies to a few things, but with the shop EZ10 and the social media pages, community futures, I think, have been financially helping us with that too. Just to sort of mostly for advertising ticket, promote them a bit, but.
Beginning at the end of March, we also started a little bit of a chat. And this was a roundtable to call to its business owners, which is a way for everyone to touch base on what was happening in their businesses. There's a lot of information coming out from the government. And it was changing on a day-to-day basis. And so this was a great place for business owners just to get together and chat. We also worked with community futures on this and brought in a few guest speakers, including WorkSafe BC and Interior Health. And those were great resources for local owners to ask questions to about things that were happening and their concern. We did a economic video update. This was done by two Cowboys video production. They did one on Greenwood area, and then they also came to Grand Forks and did one for Grand Forks, Christina Lake. And we'll talk a little bit more about them, because they're also going to go for a few more videos. On our website for Boundary Chamber, there's also a COVID-19 business portal. And this was a location where we've had, kind of just to summarize, a bunch of information that's coming out for owners to access and kind of quick links of what you can see there. Most of these links are from government websites that are being updated for the information that owners' businesses are getting is all consistent and reliable. There's relief application resources, lots of stuff for WorkSafe BC, small business BC. And then at the research fund began, so also post-revenue. Boundary Press Program, which I mentioned a few times. Basically, with that, we're just, we're transitioning it so that we can run it as a year-round program. So I've taken over the administration of that. It was a pretty quiet month for April, we were at once staying at home. But hopefully, that program takes back out of the daze forward as well. Looking at the discovery of Grand Forks. There's a fair bit on this that we need to catch up on. But we have been looking at updating the website, the blog content, looking at our best-of brochure that we want to create for the area in Grand Forks. Our events calendar, going into the management of that. And also a few things that also come out of the Roger Brooks Plan for downtown utilization, the market district promotion, crosswalks, and four-way stops and maintenance area work best during the following. And moving ahead, so for the EZ10 portal, we have decided to continue that for the month of May. And we will continue further depending on if we're able to commit. With shops being back up, we're hoping that May will give us even more results and people of their strength may be spending local. So we've been promoting that as well for this month. And that will go front until the end of May and we'll make a decision kind of here at the end of the month, I'm sure, to adapt to June. With our, we're receiving financial support. And so we are going to continue doing a couple of video updates with two Cowboys productions. We're actually starting the first video beginning to film today. And that will put the app on social media by next week. It's being shared on our social media pages as well as their YouTube channel. And our Open For Business Facebook page, we're going to start to promote who's open and do pan-free promotion for regions that are operating according to guidelines. And this way, small businesses won't be paying for the promotion fees. The Chamber will take care of it, and we can run a consistent campaign through our pages. Our weekly meetings with local business owners, we're going to probably taper them off a little bit. And hopefully move to in-person meetings at some point this year, depending on the situation. But basically, we're going to get feedback from the business community. And if they want to continue meetings or if they have questions and they feel like we need to bring in maybe someone from WorkSafe BC again, or bring in someone from Interior Health, or if there's someone else that can answer questions for them, we'll continue to do those meetings. But again, we're just going to take our, take our cues from our business members. And for the boundary bucks moving forward, as I mentioned, we're going to keep that running. Oh, the back one. We're going to keep that running year-round. The goal is to get to 50, 50 members accepting boundary bucks by the end of the year. All right, just, don't do that.
Hey, Counselor Monlan had his hand up at some point. Sarah, do you mind if we have a question?
Uh, sure.
Counselor Monlan.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Yes, Sarah. I'm theoretically the council liaison to this, the committee work that you're going to be taking on, Discover Grand Forks Committee, hasn't met for a few months. Anyhow, as part of that initiative, one thing that we were working on that seemed to fall off the radar a little bit is an update to trail signage and bringing that trail signage into the downtown core. And so if you would like to talk to me later on about it, I would appreciate it. Or if council wants to comment on it now, please let me know if there is a future meeting Zoom or not of the Discover Grand Forks Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we definitely need to set up a meeting for Discover Grand Forks in the near future. And we can, I'll chat with you after the meeting and set something up with all the parties who needs to do that.
Okay, I don't care if I'm clear, Sarah, but back to you.
So for the Discover Grand Forks, there is quite a bit of work to catch up on, because we have been a little bit hijacked about the COVID-19 situation. Stuff COVID moving forward. A lot of the stuff that was in the plan, there's the web content for like trail maps, art walks, a lot of stuff aimed around tourism information. We also want to get our directory listing up to date for any potential tourist season that we do have this year. And also building out managing our events calendar and figuring out, if there's not a lot of events listed this year, definitely get it up and running forward later on in the fall and step for, you know.
Do you have any questions, Counselor Zbinski?
Uh, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed that we lost a lot of our tree lights down on Second Street and others. I think we're going to get them back.
I don't, I can answer that question.
No, I would have assumed that was the city.
So, so through your worship, we can, we can get into that a little bit when we get into the highlight report when Morris is up and in chair, we can, we can talk about the plans.
Yeah, and your motion.
Yeah, I know that, I don't know if that pertains to our presentation necessarily, but the downtown businesses are very keen on like a well-lit area downtown. So I know we are, we'd also approve of such things anyways.
Um, just continuing. Thanks. So also our best-of brochure, we were looking at getting out this summer. And again, depending on timing of business reopening and the tourism season will be about to approach this year. And then working with the city on our market district promotion signage, all those things about utilization downtown. Also, we'll turn it up those to the books plan and just generally getting more pedestrian friendly and getting that market district up and running. So a lot of that is going to depend on the back-end business as well. I know they're keen to do it, but we have been postponed. Hopefully, everyone shows up on the restart plan as things get out there early soon. But again, we'll have to take our cues from the presidential officer.
Okay. Were there questions, Ms. Council?
I think we've just got one more slide, and then Jeff has a few words. Now we can use them.
And I would appreciate if Counselor Roger, if Counselor Roger can hold that for a little further in the meeting. Go ahead, Sarah.
This is continuing on the Grand Forks revitalization and implementation. We're also going to start looking for some tourism funding resources, potential grants and funding coming out of COVID and moving forward. Looking at the plant-train bench implementation that was set to happen before the summer started. And building and increasing awareness of Discover Grand Forks Plan. And again, this is, we'll get that committee of Discover Grand Forks together for a meeting and start to move forward on some of these things. Plaid signage, full signage, and working with the market district on some special events. If we're able to do so, one of the things that was discussed was a potential evening market. And we will just, I know farmer's market's up and running, so hopefully we can get something like that running downtown as well.
Yeah, we, sorry, we had a, we had a good chunk of plans for Discover Grand Forks focused on downtown that just didn't seem like Sarah should be jumping headfirst into, into making them happen. It was the evening market and, you know, we had Bron and Sons, I think, has John Simmons lined up a whole bunch of plants to be donated and planters. And we're going to be planting party downtown, but obviously, that's maybe something to put on hold. So I think just to mention that Discover Grand Forks stuff, we kind of had ready to launch. Like there is a Discover Grand Forks website, but we didn't really want to push it out until we had the directory up to date and the events calendar actually functioning. So it was something of a draw to that website. But obviously, both of those items are hard to manage right now. So Sarah's trying to work out some content there. And with Chris, with, with the trail stuff, I know we want to get, I think, the last thing the Chamber had talked about approving was trail mapping or something along that line. So we can get that up on the website, which would be great. And some content, yeah, around trails, around anything that's, and so I think we're kind of shifting, it's confusing maybe, but if we should still be trying to build content around downtown, or maybe focus on promoting trails and beaches and things like that instead for this year, or shifting everything for a few months might be the wrong idea. I don't know. We're kind of winging it on the Discover Grand Forks stuff, what we should be promoting in town right now, but I know we don't want to ignore it. We're just kind of deferring it also. And then I'll just touch on a few, so Chamber other business. I know, well, we had that town hall on Friday, I think most of you were there. That went rather well, just sort of addressing the business plans for reopening BC, right? And I know we all had a few dozen conversations about it, but that was very positive, so that's good. We're running our survey, well, we're running our survey now. So we're basically trying to get, you know, maybe a hundred-plus businesses to answer this survey. It's templated off of the main BC Chamber surveys and Vancouver Board of Trade, so the questions should be decent. But we need some boundary numbers, because that's hard to come by. We've had some regional reports, but it was kind of cookie-based, so, you know, farnie through here, it's hard to gauge. So we're hoping we'll get some reliable information out of that. We are hoping to, we are set to launch a new Chamber website, because it does need a bit of a refresh, but that's been all settled for, for now anyways. We're still looking for directors. We have two more spots on our board. And so we're really lucky that we got the funding through the RDF to be able to hire Sarah. And the timing was actually pretty great among us, because we wouldn't be able to do a lot of the stuff we're doing now. The board can do so much, but that worked out really well. So we do need some directors, but just NFI, for future, maybe an employee with the Chamber, a functional employee is a really good thing. And we're looking to reschedule the AGM. We're going to wait another few weeks just to see either we're just going to go fully virtual, or if it's possible to do in-person or in the fall, but we'll figure that out as we go. I don't know if there's any more information I need to share, but if there's any questions on Sarah's position or the Chamber in general, feel free.
Here, Counselor Monlan had his hand up first, and then Counselor Thompson's waiting line.
Thanks, Mayor, and thanks, Jeff and Sarah, so much for bringing this forward to council at this difficult time. You know, I, I fully endorse and supported the Roger Brooks Plan. I love the vision of a vibrant downtown. And you know what? We're halfway there already. I think we're more than halfway. In many ways, Roger was just telling us to pause up our path. And now, but today, after the COVID, and I hear it in your presentation, what to move forward on, what to hold back on. I wonder if it's worth checking out Roger's website to see if he's got any advice for post-COVID. Obviously, I have a hard time considering capital improvements, which include benches and planters. But I don't know how far apart people are supposed to sit. Nonetheless, there is so much in the plan that I believe we should go forward with. And I kind of like Jeff's idea, let's point them out of town this year. And not worry about benches and planters so much, because we know the rules. Anyhow, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and Counselor Thompson.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. I really have enjoyed this presentation and the, the way that the Chamber is moving forward on a number of things. I agree that the trails need to be promoted and put out there. But having said that, we need somewhere for those that come here to participate in that to be able to stay and to find something to eat. And with, and until we get reopening to some degree, I would just exercise some caution and kind of encourage that, although it's a, it's a very, very important part of the, of the recovery plan. Thank you.
Counselor Corlick is next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say, nice to meet you, Sarah and the Chamber. And Sarah, you're working really hard, and I think you've got a good vision for the future. And I think that even little steps, whether it is one bench and some planters, is a positive move forward. It shows that there is hope and that we are looking forward. We're not just saying, okay, we've got this, we've got that, so we can't have anything. Because we are going to be reopening sometime. And I think it's important for people to do that, that we're just not shuttered and closed forever. So good job, and continue with your positive efforts. I think it's really important.
Thank you, Counselor Corlick.
Yes, it's hard to say. Roger Brooks definitely does have an update on how to deal with COVID situation on the site. I don't have time to watch the videos. He's got these three or four slides, Discover the Last Night. So I urge all of us to take a look at those and just see if there's any actions that we can appropriate or that we can appropriate for our city.
Thank you, Sarah. And Sarah is ready here.
All right, I just wanted to chime back again and say, yes, we are waiting for businesses to reopen, but those that have stayed open in the last month have been doing an excellent job of adjusting their services. And, you know, they've, they've gone to social media, they're, they're doing virtual orders, they're doing curbside effects, they're doing deliveries, they're doing everything they're supposed to be doing. And so I think moving forward, businesses that have been open are going to excel. And those that are going to open can have a lot to learn from those that have been going through it the last few weeks. So I, I think our community should feel very confident in that our businesses are doing what we're supposed to be doing and that they're following the guideline, they're listening to, you know, the health authorities. And we're hoping that we can communicate that message out to the public as well and continue to work with businesses and make sure that they're getting the information.
Thank you, Sarah. And Jeff, anything further?
I know, well, that pretty much sums everything up. I think our goal moving forward, obviously, is to support however we can. But that message of the people that are open, as long as they are doing it properly, promoting that they're doing it properly, and that's, it's a good thing, as long as they're willing to do what they should.
Okay, I have a couple more questions here. Counselor Krug, and then we have that Counselor Thompson, and Stugley again. Did you just forget which ramp down, or did you have something else? Not sure. Okay, Counselor Krug, I didn't forget.
Yeah, contact information, is it on the Chamber website? So email contact?
Yep, that's pretty much our main form of contact at this point still. But email is on there, and then we have a mailing address, the P O box as well.
Counselor Thompson.
No, I just wanted to say that I think what the, what the Chamber is doing and moving forward is excellent. I didn't need to come across as negative with regard to the trails plan. I'm just concerned that we don't want to have an influx of people that we can't provide for. So that was, that was my concern.
And Counselor Monlan is ready.
Not so much a remodel, Mayor. I, I just want to point out to all of council and just concern, that our trails have seen a significant increase of use. They have benefited by COVID in use. And our citizens have done a lot to enjoy those trails, including the painted rocks syndrome. And I'm sure many of you are aware, there's some beautiful handmade and child-made rocks adorning our main trails, and even some of our remote ones. So as our community gets out there, continue, has increased their use and their celebration of our trails. So we too have been staying open, and, and the trails too will do well as we've come up COVID. Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Monlan. Jeff, we were here today, I think, just to meet Sarah, but obviously, she's been getting on with the jump-ups, a lot of stuff already happening, and excellent work, Sarah. So thank you very much, Jeff and Sarah. Your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, council, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is our esteemed colleague from Area D, Willie Russell, and welcome, Mr. Russell. It's, it's a tough time for all of us, and you and I have been involved in quite a bit. But please introduce anything you'd like to bring forward as a topic.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And as always, it's, it's a pleasure to be here, and I think it's a, it's a neat model that you, as council, invite me to, to join you periodically. So thank you for that. I have a couple of quick updates and then a longer piece that's a nicer segue probably from what we just heard. So just very quickly, on the community center, we're expecting the final report from the architects and the planning group this week. And so hopefully, we'll have an update there. Obviously, the kind of tail end of those conversations got a little bit upset with the COVID, the changes in the limitations in terms of COVID. But we have, as part of that, will be seeing the parking plan and so on that was, that was requested, I think, in large part from the city council. So looking forward to that. The trails master planning project, there's a piece that, you know, I'm not particularly proud of how long it's taken to, to move forward. But so the, the, over the winter, in large part, we were waiting to see if we could get the province to come to that table with some funding, which we were hopeful for, that, that didn't really come to fruition. And so we decided we would forge ahead regardless. so we decided we would forge ahead regardless. And then COVID came and obviously given the next section of that, the next phase of that project is really all about engagement, that plan, that engagement plan has to be restructured. And so that's currently where that's at, is kind of revising how we involve that engagement. There's some clear enthusiasm to move it forward, so hopefully that doesn't delay us unnecessarily long at this point in terms of that community engagement piece. Likewise, around transit, as you know, we are having those conversations around transit. We're looking into an engagement plan with the community more broadly around now, and likewise, that got kind of upset with COVID, and so trying to figure out how best to do that going forward. We would expect to hear back from DC Transit before too long around the responses that they have received for their RFP for operating that transit system. But even as a reminder, which you probably are aware of, even that current RFP, we still have to have some strategic discussion, particularly this program for some other stakeholders, around what does transit look like going forward, because the model is not as sustainable as it is right now. So there needs to be a change, either increase in funding and taxation and stable service or an increase in funding and increase in service levels or reduction in some of those pieces. So, but the most, I think the most important piece for me right now, in terms of program for it, and tied nicely with the chamber, is around that kind of, what is our local vision for restarting or revitalizing our various kind of elements of our community that have been negatively impacted. So the RD has taken the lead in terms of some of the, based on some of the recommendations that came out of the province last week around coordinating for some, so that we can have regional coordination in terms of our parks and rec facilities and so on, so that it's not some communities reopening, some communities not. So that piece, there will be conversations ongoing, I think. I think that it gets more difficult once we get into looking at, okay, what does that look like economically? And I think, I would say, a bit of gratitude out to the chamber and the futures for helping, you know, they've done a real stellar job, I think, through this process, and I assume that that economic kind of piece, they will be champions of that going forward as well. That being said, I think that there's a role for us to figure out how to make sure we support that in an effective way. And I know, you know, there's been conversations that I've heard, and I don't know whether councils have had conversations around, for example, do we follow the lead of some larger municipalities and start trying to shut off, for example, Market Street to allow for those restaurants to have space to be able to serve their customers in a way that adheres to those recommendations. So there's room, and I don't have a good proposal for what it looks like, but there's room, I think, for us to make sure that we're having conversations around that economic revitalization, restart, whatever that looks like, to make sure it's coordinated and effective and the community has some faith in the fact it's all being done safely and effectively. And likewise with the social end of the spectrum in terms of, you know, are there needs that we have locally and regionally that we need to be supporting through whatever resources we need to support them, to make sure that they're done effectively? And that's all I have. So happy to discuss, again, appreciate the opportunity to share these with you, given that we have very much shared needs, I think, in terms of city grants, market boards here and times like this.
Great, this is Roly, and I'm looking for questions from council. So I, Mr. Duncan, do you have anything from the city that says that you would like to bring up with the regional district and our relationship? And I see Counselor Mazzan looking for answers.
So three, Your Worship, the only thing I would comment on is our close relationship with the RD through the EOC and Graham's role and just how we've moved forward and some of the comments that I've heard from Graham and some of the other individuals that were doing a walkthrough here last week is just how prepared the city is and how much infrastructure and mitigating structures we have on site and just feeling very comfortable with their level right now. So that's the only thing I got.
Counselor Mazzan.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and to you, thank you Director Russell for being forthcoming with our communication with your YouTube videos and the theme. I repeat, I think we have been more on media than ever before. Anyhow, I do echo Mr. Russell's request for vision and what is it going to look like? And I think it goes back to the previous presentation from the chamber, what are we going to vision? And also, I guess, about the trails master plan, it all seems to me to ham on how we're going to engage each other through this pandemic. You know, more and more, I'm seeing how effective the people can take to zoom our similar technologies. Perhaps if we need to engage the mass, the public for the trails master plan, we can use Zoom. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Mazzan. Roly.
Thank you. And, yeah, you know, as to some of the previous comments as well around the trails, I certainly, from rural grant force perspective, think that we're in a really, there's a huge opportunity here. You know, we know from that Roger Brooks kind of plan, there was a focus around some branding, around cycling in particular, and so on. I think that there's a real opportunity there to develop that, and I think it's reasonable that we can do so in a way that doesn't, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to target bringing in risk of transmission here, right? We could do that in a way that really helps provide our local community opportunities for recreation and builds on that in a longer term kind of strategic tourism.
Next one. Thank you very much, Director Russell. Looking to that, I don't see any further questions, so Director Russell, thank you very much again for being here. You're going to hang around, we're going to look at next the events that are being canceled for the coming year, but thank you very much for being part of this group.
Thank you all for having me.
Okay, moving on, Council, to presentations from staff, I'm not sure who's leading this one, the 2020 events update.
Daniel will be leading that one, Your Worship.
Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in the report, I quickly wanted to highlight to council some of the challenges we're obviously facing on the event side from our rural dividend fund grant. So first off, I want to let council know that we have already engaged with the provincial government about extending the rural dividend fund for another year, so that we can hopefully, even if we lose part of this event season, we can maybe get some events going in 2021. Otherwise, the fund would actually be cut off at the end of March, and so far I've gotten positive feedback regarding renewing that in terms of the timeline. However, they haven't told me that I was going to get more money. I am trying to get a little bit of extra funding here to support the marketing side on the chamber end and the event side on the city end that we're currently doing. So I think the first one, obviously, the big one that's coming up right now would be Canada Day. We received the other day, a document from the Department of Canadian Heritage regarding the potential for holding a belated Canada Day or a virtual Canada Day. Given what we're hoping to do to get the community back out once we're allowed to have events again of that size, I was hoping to, or on the staff side, we were hoping to basically do a belated Canada Day, and that's currently what we're going to go with. So they're letting us keep our $1,500 funding that we got and go from there. The car show was next. We received the request from our partners that the car show party in the streets were going to be held together this year. Our partners at Magnum Auto were hoping to cancel the event simply because it's not feasible to have people traveling with cars right now. It's probably not the best idea to bring that potential of transmission to the community if it doesn't have to be. So we're supportive of that and basically are planning to cancel it at this point. The bike farm tour is still a potential, so because we're looking at maybe August and it looks like some of the restrictions are going to start easing up, we can definitely plan with a bike tour where people are A-exercising and visiting our local farmers to support our agricultural industry a little bit. And I think there was a barbecue or breakfast planned to start in the downtown and then basically go out to the farms for finishing up barbecue. I think that's how the rotation was. Market on Market, as soon as people are allowed to have those kind of markets again, where it's not just food vendors, we're planning on every second Saturday to still have that event going on, to have Market Street shut down and actually hold a market on Market Street. It'll have a benefit to the local businesses as well. Ideally, arrange it so that the opening hours are identical and we can draw a lot of people all at once into the downtown core to shop at the little stores, but also shop at the vendor booths. And then there's the winter season events, we're still looking at holding those at the moment as hopefully restrictions lift, but of course, we would be following the guidelines from industrial orders as well on that. Is there any questions from council on that report?
Great. I saw something posted just in our mail that was a municipality asking for support in terms of loosening some of the liquor regulations that might allow for more of that consumption outdoors. I think that, you know, relaxing those regulations might also make patios and things work better for people. I'm not sure exactly which areas, but is that something that we can look at?
So usually that's, I believe, provincial regulations and federal regulations that we're dealing with, so if the province changes that. But I believe Director Russell earlier mentioned about the idea of what some municipalities and even larger cities are doing, they're blocking off entire downtown roads to allow restaurants to basically spill out onto the road, to set up patios in larger spaces. That's something that we as a city can potentially consider, to allow either more sidewalk space or to, for example, block market half off from second to fourth or so, to allow the restaurants such as the Wooden Spoon and the Boardroom, the Ice Cream Shop, to allow them more space to venture out, right, the time and place when they're reopening. I think that's what the idea is behind that, which would also create that vibe that Roger Brooks is hoping for, that downtown feel where it's community downtown. It'll likewise probably help the other businesses if they stay open longer on those days when this happens, even if we try it out only for a day or two a week or a month, to simply show the support to our business community.
We have a question from Counselor Mazzan. Jeff, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, just a couple comments on your report, Daniel. I guess maybe what we need to be thinking of is a different kind of event. It occurs to me that the bike farm tour doesn't have to be an event. It can be like a passport event. You could go from place to place to place and collect signatures and that way, and then change it into, I don't know, powder blocks, whatever. It doesn't have to be an event. That's all in one day. You could make that kind of adjustment. I kind of grin at dinner theater. Perhaps we can have a drive-in theater and we'll bring popcorn to your car. I know that, anyhow, I too, again, echo your thinking about the alignment of the streets and planning for outdoor patio restaurants. Invite me to time, and I know we have this report ahead of us this morning of traffic and to reconsider some of the traffic patterns in the downtown core, perhaps the single lane market. Maybe we'll put that out there later. Thanks, Mayor.
Through you, Your Worship, just to respond to Counselor Mazzan, so if council has an opportunity to listen to the provincial update last Thursday, the province has a plan to roll out a number of policies or best practices, whether it be for campgrounds or, you know, washrooms, et cetera, and information is kind of changing daily on that side of things. So as that information rolls out, that's really going to dictate how and what our events look like moving forward, and I think we're going to get more information, you know, within the next two weeks. They're talking about May 19. However, on the flip side, they're also saying that, you know, sports and gatherings, they're really nowhere near anything over 50 until there's scenes. We're going to have to flip it on its head if we're going to have some events this year and we're going to have to take a look at it. By no means are we there yet, and really, we're waiting on the province to understand what that looks like. As far as downtown and restaurants, as some of those and some of that information comes out, it's definitely a great idea. We would definitely want to make sure we got some feedback from the other businesses in that area. They probably would be very open to it, but you'd want to get some feedback to ensure that, you know, the best intentions don't have negative consequences on other businesses. And we have a question from Les, sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, so I'm listening to all this and it's great that you're going to let the businesses, the restaurants spill out into the street once or twice a week or a month or something, but I'm pretty sure the restaurants would say, well, that's just not enough to keep us alive. So maybe you could toss the idea around of, because we've talked about this in this town on and off since I got here, since before I got here, of turning market into a walking wall. And maybe this is the time to do that, to allow those places that need to have people come and congregate, be able to have them spread out to cover a bigger space, or maybe let them use the back lanes or something like that on a regular daily basis or evening basis. That's one suggestion. And the other one to do with the biking and the hiking is maybe we should bill ourselves to the people in Vancouver and other major centers as a place that's pretty much COVID-free and you can come here and get away from it. That's it. Simple.
And so just to respond to Les and council, I think, council, you heard that, those comments? Yep, so just to confirm, and just to respond, there's a lot of communities that have entered down the path of spirit squares or other non-traffic zones, and so there's a lot of good examples and some do's and don'ts that if council wanted to go down that road, we could definitely look into.
Yeah, that's an interesting direction. I think we are going to pursue it. Counselor Gorlick is waiting.
I really like the model of closing market because, I mean, if you go anywhere in Europe, there's huge squares that are all just restaurants and shops that spilled out into their common area and into the road in our town. I just think it's great and it gives a sense of camaraderie. It's really a great atmosphere, and I think if we're trying to promote our downtown as a viable place for pedestrian traffic and what, I think it's a good idea and certainly to go forward with it. And I kind of agree with Les, a couple days a month isn't going to cut it. It's either, to me, it's kind of all or nothing. I mean, really, it's a lot of work for the businesses to think, okay, today we're out on the street, so let's get everything set up for one day. It's work. I mean, and they want to make it look nice and be a viable enterprise, so it'll have to be, I think, a little more frequently than once a month or once a year or whatever. But I think it's a great model and I think all the businesses could participate in something like that. So anyway, that is kind of a great way to look, and maybe now is the time since everything's been so restricted in movement and everything, so we're already looking at that. And if Vancouver, with their great population that certainly outweighed us, can look at this and other communities, I think it's a great possibility and an opportunity that we could move forward with something like that. I mean, that's how I feel about it.
Three, Worship. We have a question from Les.
It's not so much a question, but while you were talking, I went off to check on Roger Brooks's website, and he has a video on their tourism and coronavirus COVID-19, three ideas to boost a little tourism local spending, so, you know, there's something for you to look at. That's it.
Counselor Thompson.
I would just comment that we need to discuss if we're going to close Market Avenue with the business community. I mean, all of them. I mean, all the restaurants on Market, I think currently have outside seating available to their customers. And Kathy, or Council Corlick brought up Vancouver. And it seems to me that when they, and this is a number of years ago, closed off Grand Forks to traffic others and only allowed buses and taxis, seems to me that their business community were negatively impacted by that decision. I could be wrong and I don't mean to, again, put stuff out there, but I think these are all the things that have to be considered. Looking at St. Luke's and reading some of the comments from local people, people with health issues that are, have difficulty walking, if they need hip replacements or knee replacements or whatever, we're not a chamber of that. So I mean, this is something I think we really have to look at carefully before we make any kind of decision of that in part.
Okay, Council Stuteley.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind people of Roger Brooks's 10-10-10. So basically what that means is in order to have a successful community, quotes mark down here, we have to have at least 10 small retail open, 10 and 10 restaurants open. So far at this point, we don't quite have that. So I don't know how well that permit closure will go. In support of temporary closures, you know, just a couple of days here or there, it was a regular thing. If that's the chambering, DVA and the small businesses, but I'm also going to bring in the 10-10-10, which sort of guarantees a permit closure to be successful.
We have Council Corlick waiting, but I'm going to draw this to a close here. I think that it's worth further discussion, but I think as Council Thompson pointed out, it has to come forward to us from the downtown business people. So I think that we should be ready for further discussion on this matter. Council Corlick.
Just one quick note, mobility. I'm well aware of mobility issues in Grand Forks. I haven't spent a few weeks, months on a knee scooter. I know what our deficiencies are and our good things too. So yeah, we have a lot of work to do before we could close it down completely.
Okay, thank you very much. Council, can I have a motion to accept this report for information? Council Thompson, Council Corlick, all those in favor? Great, thank you. Moving on, the next issue is a fairly lengthy report, again, receiving us for information at this point with traffic and signage uptake. And I think Mr. Redfern has done a lot of work on this.
No, I can't take any credit for that. It's been Morris and Daniel that have really plowed into this through your worship. And really, I'll pass it over here in a second, but this really feeds into the last discussion that council was just having on the previous report. And really, it's that moment to say, you know, sometimes our best intentions, whether it be four-way stops or different areas that we want to look at, you know, we don't want to piecemeal some of those decisions and we want to wrap them into a bigger plan. And albeit, I haven't got through all of the previous plans done for the city Grand Forks and I'm still working my way through and this Roger Brooks stuff is something I'll have to read a little more into. But really, the next report is around, you know, if we want to make substantial change, if council feels that there's change needed, whether it be traffic flow, pedestrian safety, bike safety, you need to look at it as a whole and you don't want to piecemeal it and look at it intersection by intersection. So, I mean, that's the gist of the report. I'll kick it over to Daniel. You know, closing areas of downtown also fit into that and would increase traffic in other areas. So if you were going to do it, you'd want to feed all of that into the plan. But I'll pass it over to Daniel and Morris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first part is basically, Morris and I wanted to summarize a little bit of how we came about for the four-way stop on Second and Market at this point and so far, a little bit of the feedback that we've gotten out of it. So this whole process started in 2018 where the DBA came to council and asked council to please investigate the four-way stop and speed in the downtown due to concerns for safety. So after this, the Roger Brooks report supported something like this as well for a four-way stop and then council gave funding towards it. The report now has, for the sign has now been installed. So far, I have heard only positive comments about it, except for that supposedly some more honking of horns is going on. It seems like people may not know what the rules and regulations are exactly of a four-way stop, because we only have one, I believe, which is behind the Canco, close to where Foundry Computers used to be. That's, I think, the only four-way stop in this community right now, or it was. Now we got two. So council, at the time, also asked staff to investigate a four-way stop option at Selkirk College out here, right outside City Hall. There was an accident last year. Morris started looking into signage and there came across some speed signs that said it was a 30 zone, but they're not really large enough. And on top of that, we've had near misses. I can see two intersections right outside my window and we hear screeching tires on the regular here for the intersections on Fourth Street and 72nd and Fourth and Market. So there's definitely a lot of concern. We want to also portray ourselves to the world that we are a bike-friendly and pedestrian-friendly community. So a lot of things have happened over the last two years. The Roger Brooks plan is definitely changing how we want to advertise ourselves to the world. And as Duncan was saying, we need to look at this a little more on the holistic side. So at this point, we're planning on going forward with, looking at this more as a wholesome strategy that deals with the idea of 30 kilometers an hour potentially in some areas of town. The four-way stop patterns, is there an opportunity to introduce one-way streets to reduce a safety risk? But looking at it for one intersection by intersection could have a negative effect as well if we create too many four-way stops all at once, for example. Anyways, that's it from my end. Morris, is there anything?
I pause here and have questions. We've got a couple waiting. Zach was first and then I count the frog.
I just forgot to take down my hand.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
I forgot to lower my hand.
Oh, okay, thank you. Council Corack, anything else?
Yeah, a couple of things. When we were talking four-way, I thought we were also putting one down by...
72nd and Second by any chance?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so and it's on my list. And I'm not saying that we should put one there or shouldn't put one there. In discussions with our CAO, we're basically looking at this, okay, if we start popping four-way stops here, here and here, how will the traffic pattern change? Will we have any negative effects coming from it? But yes, that's definitely on the list for that should be reviewed. Council never, council has yet made a resolution to say, put one there, basically, just investigate it at this point.
Okay, a couple of things, four ways. Like I say, I've been in a lot of cities that basically have four ways almost at every intersection. Qualcomm, Cloverdale, that type of thing. You can go anywhere in that town within minutes and there's no backups, there's no negatives to it. And if you're going to introduce four ways, one at a time, as opposed to just saying, here's our new plan, that one up at Selkirk has always been an issue. The one outside of Dave Dale, which Daniel was talking about, is always an issue. Because I sit there and I scream at him, go into Dave Dale, get the book on learning how to drive. And as I said earlier, he said, people aren't sure about four ways. It gets us like, yeah, then you shouldn't have a license, right? Right? You shouldn't even be on a road anywhere. But that would allow free movement, no confusion. Like I say, the one at 72nd is probably the worst. And that's what DBA came to talk to us about, was the speed coming off the bridge. That was their main concern is when people hit that bridge, they're coming down and they don't even, they haven't even reduced speed by the time they hit Service DC. So the first dot sign makes up, they can't go. And then you're, from there to the next one, you're under 30 clicks. And yet you do it 10 times faster than if everybody and their dog is just trying to drive at 30 clicks. So we need more four-way stops.
Thank you, Council. I lose my speaker's list when we go to anything that's up on the screen. So I can't see who was next there. There we go. Okay, moving to Council Mothlin, then Council Corlick. Yes, thanks Mayor. I'd like to repeat our support, Council Corack's recommendation for more four-way stops. The other thing I really do think we should seriously consider is the reduction in speed where we can, that we should post 30 kilometers throughout 72nd, from Fifth all the way through to maybe Riverside. And for sure, post it on Market, which is kind of no greater. I assume that Market is already a 30 kilometer an hour zone. So yes, I certainly support this. And I also support that, but just because we don't get it right the first time, doesn't mean we should stop trying. In other words, don't wait to have a comprehensive citywide plan before you try something out. Slower is better in my mind and wider is certainly better for pedestrians. Those are my comments. Thanks, Mayor. And Council Corlick was next and Council Mothlin. Only coming through from here.
I agree. I support the four-way stops. I live on the corner of Third and 75th, witnessed it almost, a pedestrian getting run over a couple of weeks ago because nobody slows down. They don't even go on to the stop signs that there are on Third and they just fly around. And 75th is not thorough there, there are no stop signs, there'll be several blocks and people just fly down that street because they don't have to stop. And there's a lot of concerns with our other residents in our area. There's children, there's seniors, there's a lot of people and everybody's out the streets walking or doing whatever and there's no stop signs, there's nothing to slow anybody down. Third and 75th would be a good start because that's right at the corner of Tellus and it's just incredibly busy and they don't slow, they don't even hesitate. And as we say, I witnessed an all pedestrian almost getting run over. And the guy was yelling at her for being at the crosswalk.
There is a fatality as well.
Yeah. Anyway, I support the four-way stops.
Council Thompson. You can do it, Council Thompson.
Thank you. I support the four-way stop, but I would recommend that they start at Fifth so that people heading east on 76th know that there's a slowdown before they come down to Archaeology. If you do it at Fifth, you know, there could be issues. The other thing I wanted to comment on, and I don't know that the city has any control over this, but last week we had a very, very close friend of ours stop in because he was traveling west on Central Avenue and going to turn on Donaldson Drive to head home. And he, there was another very, very close friend of all of ours that was driving his scooter and I'm afraid this individual may have the onset of Alzheimer's. But at any rate, he was on the sidewalk in his scooter and he didn't stop, he just went straight through. And our friend almost hit him and he was so shaken by it that he stopped halfway to settle himself down, call himself down. I don't know what we can do, if there's anything we can do in that kind of a location or situation. It may be out of our hands, it may be nothing we can do, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Okay, and Council Corack, you spoke up, did you have something you wanted to add here at this point?
Uh, no.
And then moving on to Council Mothlin. Yes, thanks Mayor. You know, that's the highway and that's MLTI, Council Thompson. You know, obviously, I would say that there's a major wildlife crossing there, right at the TransCanada Trail. It's a natural slew area right at A and W. There's confusion a little bit already with the barriers that the city had constructed along the side block there. It impedes some traffic, the wildlife. Anyhow, there would be a real need for a 30 kilometer an hour zone there from that intersection, probably past the A and W. I wish we had the authority to do it there. Maybe if we do it more aggressively with the city, MLTI will get the idea. Thanks, Mayor. Okay, and Council Thompson, your head's still up or did you want to follow up on that?
No, I'd like to follow up on that. I was just, and I'm thinking aloud here, but what would be the issue with closing off the right-hand turnoff in all of these Central Avenue and making people go to the stoplight? And they can, you know, they're going to act as, there's a, the whole question is the hotel they're keeping. You know, it just causes me real concern that there could be just horrible events happening here.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think that's a one-way street right now that you're referring to with Donaldson Drive. So unless, for some reason, the direction gets changed on that, I don't see that turnoff really disappearing at that section.
We could take, we'll take a look at it, Mr. Mayor. We'll see what we can do. It's probably within highways jurisdiction, but Morris has it on his list and we'll look into it.
Can I have a motion to accept this for information, this report? Council Corlick, Council Corack. And before we vote, clearly you've got a lot of information from us here, Mr. Redfern, in terms of what we're looking for. I think you're telling us we should take this as a holistic approach, not piecemeal it. We're hearing that we generally support a slowdown and a safety approach to it and if more four-way stops make sense and we want to hear that back from a reporter, some kind of recommendations for action. So I think it's great it's introduced and you're getting a certain amount of feedback at this point that gives you some direction on where to go with it.
Sure, so through your worship, by all means, council, if council wants to put a four-way stop and that resolution comes forward, we will do it. Something I committed to council when I started was, you know, well-researched recommendations. And we'll turn this around quick. Some of it's been two years in the making already, some of it's been six months in the making. We will turn it around quick, we'll take a look and we'll look at it holistically. You'll have some options in front of you and you'll have a recommendation.
It sounds excellent. And all those in favor of receiving for information, here he is. The next item of business is the DMAF Program Charter, a draft of this. And again, I would pass this back to Mr. Redfern for his staff to introduce.
Sure, we'll bring Justin in. He's got the PowerPoint and we'll just have to monitor for hands because the mayor won't be able to see it if the shared screen is on. So we'll monitor that for you, Mr. Mayor. And I will just speak very briefly. Essentially, the charter that Justin's going to run through is really setting the stage for decision-making moving forward. And really, there's some principles in there and it's all very, very important. There's an operational plan component. It was just, you know, Justin and I sat down and chatted with Dolores and Graham and it was just a little heavy to have all in the same meeting, so we chunked it out. Starts with the charter and the charter is really laying out those principles. Starts with the charter, and the charter is really laying out those principles, and just the decision-making process, and so I think we have the share screen, so we'll kick it over to Justin.
We're working on it.
We're working on it.
Morning, your worship, counsel.
We're done.
You've got shrinks, something went, something went wrong here.
Counselor's in.
Hang on, sorry, folks.
Counselor Moazlin, while we're in pause, you have some voices coming through when you're live, so I'm sure you would ask some questions in this next round. You might check on whether it's made or not.
I get just the voices in his head there, you can.
Sorry, your worship. I was going to have my question here before it actually started, the presentation started, but maybe perhaps go ahead with the presentation, and yep, there are voices in the background called Grandma.
Okay, I think you're good to go.
So counsel, Kevin's telling me we're good to go. Can everybody see the DMAF Program Charter slide on the screen there? Just wanted to double-check.
Yeah.
So hopefully, we're presenting the project, sorry, Program Charter, I'll explain what that is in just a second, for information purposes only. This is just in order to start the kind of the review process at this point. Nothing's been locked down, but the charter's been basically created based on the feedback and discussions that we've had, not only in our sphere with my colleagues and with Duncan, but also what we've heard from you, the council. So to that vein, I think Don did a good job of presenting what really a Program Charter is. This is a very complex program, as we've discussed. I guess just to set the framework a little bit more, the term program or project charter is a project management institute, which is a world-recognized project management body for this document. So that's really the framework in which we're undertaking this program because it is so complex. We're basically applying the processes and procedures of the PMI, we call Project Management Institute. So one of the things out of the gate, typically what we do, actually before you do anything in regards to a project or a program, is create a project charter. But as you know, from a previous presentation I've done, we've kind of done things a little bit out of order. What we're trying to do here over the next, the previous month and the next month coming forward is kind of get back on track in regards to the logical order of process, and so that's why I brought forward this Program Charter at this point. So what is it? It provides a universal understanding and alignment of the various stakeholders, obviously counsel being one of the key stakeholders, of the who, the what, and the why for the program, specifically the what and the why. What are we going to try and achieve with the program, and why are we trying to achieve it? The who is more kind of operational to a certain degree, but it also speaks about the key stakeholders. In my mind, there's four key stakeholders, there's a plethora of stakeholders across the entire program, but those key stakeholders are obviously the council here, RDKB, sorry, I meant to say four, there was five. RDKB, the council, our two funders, which is the provincial government and the federal government, and of course, the First Nations whose lands that this program will be undertaken on. The how of the program, of how we deliver it is operational, and as Duncan spoke to, we'll be presenting that, and there are much more detailed plans, if you're looking for specifics, they will be in the operational plans, whether it's a communication plan, schedules, budgets, organizational charts. You'll hear me mention the term RACI, R-A-C-I, that's roles, accountabilities, consultation, and information, that's basically who's doing what. And then also, and probably most importantly, the charter also authorizes the project managers to undertake the work and apply the necessary resources to accomplish the goal, which we'll talk about here in a second. Why is it needed? I always answer this in one word, governance. So up until this point, you know, we've had a lot of people doing a lot of different things, just a lot of it, some of it was reactionary, some of it due to timeframes and time pressures, and just as the process has unfolded, it was just necessary to get these things done. But now, the time has come to apply some logical and efficient governance to this whole process so we can deliver what you want in timeframes you want, within the budgets that every, all the stakeholders want. So ultimately, governance to logically and efficiently align the resources, tasks, roles, processes, and procedures to accomplish the goal. Is there any questions around the charter document, if you've had a chance to review it, or why it's there?
Counselor Moazlin has his hand up.
Counselor Moazlin, I have found a way to pick up the participants, so Counselor Moazlin. Thanks, your worship. Just a question, I really like this document, I can see that it has, it is a result of Mr. Denstall and staff listening to counsel over the last bit, some of the principles involved, I certainly support. I guess my first basic question is, this is going to come to council, I believe, May 25th, for adoption. Actually, now and then, is it amendable? Can, well, can anything I say at this meeting actually change this document, or whatever?
Provided counsel, sorry, Counselor Moazlin, provided counsel is in agreement with it, right? We always try to capture counsel's intent and not so much focus on individual counselors' input.
Yes, thank you very much for that. I certainly agree. Well, during the presentation, then I do want to see if I can add for counsel's consideration, at least one more guiding principle that might help our community be prepared and accept this project, although so much of this project is really good for the communities. And so I hope I get the opportunity during the presentation to do that. Thanks.
Counselor Johnson is next, and then Counselor Zalinski.
Yes, thank you, your worship. I think this is an excellent document. I read the whole thing, I think it's excellent information for counsel to follow, and I would be interested to know what Counselor Moazlin's recommendation is, but I certainly couldn't find anything that I felt needed to be added to the document. Thank you.
Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess for me, I would like a little more time to digest the document, and hopefully amendments in the future. But I don't know what we're going to go through step by step, I've got a couple of questions, but yeah, I like the overall objectives and the strategy, I'm looking forward to the operational plans to look at a little bit in detail, a great start, and hopefully massages to fulfill what the mandates.
So just before I go on to the next slide, I'll just put in two cents to the original question from Counselor Moazlin. This is your document, it is all stakeholders' document, but ultimately, I feel that City Council is really the prime stakeholder in regards to this. It's absolutely amendable, that's why we're presenting it here today, and I look forward to your feedback. And Counselor Zalinski, yeah, the charter is kind of the broad strokes, the broad guiding principles. The details will be in the operational plans, and we look forward to your feedback and amend it accordingly, but absolutely, this is 100% counsel's document.
Okay, I'm having any other hands up, so back to you, Justin, in terms of the report.
Sure, so we'll just ask Kevin to go on to that second slide. So this program goal is just wording that I've come up with, and just for everybody's benefit, this charter is not a duplication of the DMAF application, hence the wording will be slightly different, it will be changed. It's really, as I just stated, counsel and the key stakeholders' document to build consensus and alignment so we can all agree on what we want to deliver and what success looks like in the end. So this is just wording that I put forward as a rough cut in regards to what we're trying to achieve with the program, open for edit, open for change, complete change, however you want, just to read it out, to protect, this program goal is to protect the socioeconomic fabric of the community of Grand Forks and the Boundary Region against current and future overland flood risks for the next 100 years. That doesn't necessarily mean that we're building diques going to last 100 years, it'll be much more than that, but at the end of the day, I think we can all probably agree, at least that after 100 years, it's, you know, that's pretty far away in the future, so if we can get 100 years, I think we'll be in good shape. But I'll leave it at that in regards to any feedback that you may have relative to the program goal.
Okay, and on that topic there, Counselor Zalinski has a hand up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my two cents worth is if we could dumb this down for me, maybe a grade three level, you know, something that people could actually grab onto to know where we're going. I know the details throughout the document would spell that out, but whether it's the socioeconomic fabric, what that means to our citizens, I don't know. And I guess just from my point, I stopped the sentence at future overland flood risk, period, because I see timelines on something that holds your hands to it, or people do that kind of thing. That's a common.
If I'm around in 100 years, you absolutely can hold me accountable, Counselor. But that's a very good point, point's well taken from that perspective.
Back to you, Justin.
Okay. So, sorry, just before I move on, does counsel align then to modify and shorten that program goal, and I can provide a couple of different versions, what is counsel's wishes?
My wishes is that we don't dumb it down too far, that we insult the public. I think that most people would understand it, and those that don't can probably ask questions of their friends, so I think there's a risk here that we simplified it too much, that we certainly will be insulting the intelligence of the public. Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you. Number two, just more details, so are we giving local companies, I think it says it here in, I got 1.5.3, are we giving a break to local companies? Do we, or is it bottom-line dollars that you're going to be judging people on? I have no problem whether there's a percentage for having a local company do something as long as they have, you know, all the trade stipulations, but I'm just wondering how far this one can go.
Thank you, counselor. So, yeah, I was just actually asking about the program goal, if there was any change aligned to what you'd said previously, but hearing nothing, then I guess we'll skip ahead to the slide that we're on, which is the program objectives. If I could just beg your forgiveness for a second, Counselor Zalinski, I'd just like to kind of move through these in order, if that's okay, and then I can address those specific comments that you had on number two. So the DMAF project objectives, why, and you'll see guiding principles later, what are the difference between those two things? The objectives are just that, they are, in lack of a better term, specific goals, we have the global goal, but there's specific, definable, discrete goals, that if we achieve these, we're effectively saying that we have achieved program success. Where the guidelines give us just that, guidelines are advice as to how we get there, and kind of the rules of the road. The objectives themselves are just that, mission objectives, discrete, quantifiable things that we can meet to make program success. So if we work through them in order, and I'd just like to go through one by one, because if there are any additions, comments, I'd like to hear them just in a logical order. The objectives themselves aren't necessarily in any order where the guidelines usually are prioritized. So objective number one, remove and/or significantly reduce overland flood risk in residential, commercial, and industrial neighborhoods within the city of Grand Forks. Excuse my alignment, because it's obviously moved around. Pretty straightforward objective, is there any concern with that? Number one.
Counselor Moazlin had his hand up, I don't know whether we've gone past the point you wanted to make or not, Counselor Moazlin.
Well, your worship, this is the page that my concern is about, is that this is a program that's going to take place for several years. In fact, I think one of the problems with the document is that it's a little bit optimistic about timeline. Anyhow, so my concern is that there's some things that need to be done. First, should be our guiding principles. I guess if we put number one, remove or significantly reduce, if we put the phrase "as soon as possible" remove and/or significantly reduce overland flood risk, I would be much happier, because I'm really apprehensive, your worship, that we are going to sustain further damage to our community in the next freshettes unless we are mindful of where best to put our resources to prevent future damage from flooding before the programs end and slowly implement. Anyhow, that's my concern, your worship. I'm certainly willing to talk more about that, counsel.
I want to ask you, Justin, before Counselor Thompson had a question, but Justin, did you want to respond to Counselor Moazlin?
Well, I would agree, you know, I have put an aggressive timeline forward until we really get the designs, you know, further along to detailed design, and I have some strategies what I'd like to talk about if time permits, but some strategies on bringing some contractors on early to understand how much we can do. I guess the one broad comment I said, I believe I spoke to it a little bit in the document later on, is to say, you know, we could potentially, you know, given that we had all the funding in place, we could potentially attack this all at once, but I just don't see that as feasible, given the disruption and all the safety issues associated with that. So I put forward a fairly aggressive timeframe. At this point, I do believe it is achievable, and I've said this a couple of times, but I don't think I believe I've said it out to counsel. The risk, as I see it going forward, is a function of time, as Counselor Moazlin has described. There's this year's freshette, there's next year's freshette, which is an unknown, this year's was trending good, so far, if you'll knock on wood, so far we've been doing pretty good. There's next year's freshette, and if you look at the schedules and what I think is achievable, by the third freshette, I think most of the critical areas, not all of them, but most of the critical areas from a flood risk perspective will be taken care of. So really, assuming that this year goes the way it's going right now, we would have two more freshettes of risk, and that would be significantly reduced even after the first year.
Thank you. And Counselor Thompson had her hand up, and then Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you, your worship. I was just going to say that the objectives are the overall objective, and I don't have an issue with not having timelines included in that, because, as Justin has said, those timelines are identified later on in the charters of where they're looking for things to be done. So I would, I think what he's done here is just fine, I don't have an issue with it, and I don't think I need to see timelines included.
Thank you. Counselor Zalinski.
We'll jump in real quick, sorry, Counselor Zalinski, twice we've jumped in on you, but we, Counselor Thompson, you're absolutely right, the timelines are in the actual operational piece that's going to come second. Right now, we're really talking big picture, holistic principles, guidelines, that operational component will come later with those timelines.
Thank you. Counselor Zalinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we reference overland flood, yet the major project for the downtown dewatering is addressing seepage, and we know that's part of the problem in a lot of our areas, that even if we protect ourselves against overland flood, what are we doing about seepage in some of those critical areas? So I don't know if there's a wording change or what, but I think we're addressing that stuff for the downtown, and I'm just wondering whether or not, as flooding goes, whether seepage should be mentioned someplace in there.
Understood, I can take a try at rewording that so it captures those things, counsel.
Counselor Thompson, did you forget to put your hand down?
Yes, thank you.
And Counselor Moazlin, then.
Yep, thank you, your worship. Yeah, I can sort of see Counselor Zalinski's point, it's not just overland risk, it is seepage, it's also erosion control. And of course, Mayor, this is where I, the specific I'm having is my concern about lands on Johnson's flats. I did send both photos to counsel, Mr. Muller's residence, or his house is becoming more endangered every day.
So Justin has done some work on that, Counselor Moazlin? So Justin has done some work on that, Counsel Moslin, Your Worship? And at the end of the presentation, he will walk council through what that looks like, that part of the project looks like, and that's going to answer all of your questions.
Okay, well, thank you to the CIO for that reassurance. I look forward to hearing it. But part of what we're being asked to look at is an operational timeline, which puts Mr. Muller's lands and some of the lands in Johnson's flats at risk for another freshet quite often necessary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And you have your hand up.
I do so. I don't know what, if anything, can be done on seepage when, when properties are, are in the floodwaters. I mean, I don't know how you control that. You know, water's coming up from the, from the ground. So I don't know, that's, somebody can explain that to. I don't see why we need to include that in there, because we have the ready to control it anyway.
Sure. And, to Your Worship, we, we have a, I mean, the intent of, of this, look, we can tweak some of the language, and we definitely need those comments, but we have 19 slides that we also need to plow through. So I don't, I don't want to blur it too much. I mean, if our biggest challenge is, you know, with, with the overall program is some tweaks on the wording, we're doing an excellent job. That's, that's great, right? We're moving forward. So if we can, we'll, we'll address that with all due respect, but we'll try to move through it fairly quickly, if that's okay, as well, Council. We definitely want to capture your concerns, though.
I, I've heard those concerns, and I think as we move through the council, or move through the presentation, and definitely at the end, we can address those specifically. Council?
Counsel, I'm hearing that we need to let Justin go on with the rest of the presentation and hold your questions to the end.
I think that's a good idea.
Justin, you're on.
Thank you, Your Worship. So I've, I've got some feedback, good feedback on objective number one. Objective number two, where feasible leverage program opportunities to reinvest resources made available in the program and support the community through direct engagement of local companies and employment opportunities, local government. You know, obviously, Grand Forks is a small community. We have a large amount of money coming our way from our key stakeholders, which we very much appreciate. And it would be good to try and reinvest that through, whether it's human procurement or actually through direct employment, which I'll speak about here in a second, back to that community. So ultimately, we can, and I think this is a good idea, I've done it in the past, and that would be my strong recommendation, to try and create opportunities, or either through the procurement process, where larger companies that may come in to do this work, employ the local companies. Now, I can mandate that a little bit. I don't want to play with that too much, because there's obviously a cost benefit associated to that. You know, we have to be cognizant of costs. But specifically, I want to draw your attention to the last line, which is employment opportunities for local residents. I've done this in the past. B.C. Housing, when I was a GM with B.C. Housing, we had a program called Blade Runners, for example. And the Blade Runners program basically made it a contractual mandatory requirement for companies doing work on a specific site to hire local residents and either train them up and give them trainable skill sets, or even hire them just for, you know, kind of more of a labor position, whatever that looks like. And I believe there's an excellent opportunity to do that in this program, and obviously those dollars come back to not only the people, but the community themselves. So overall, that's really what that objective is trying to do, is bring these big resources that we have, mostly financial, and help out the local community and companies associated to it. Any comments?
The mayor wants to know. The mayor would like him to hold their comments, so you can keep.
Oh, I'm sorry. Number three, incorporate and expand and/or enhance natural infrastructure and community green spaces, so parks, community access, trails, and other direct and indirect outdoor activities for public use and enjoyment in conjunction with flood mitigation works. So again, I, I think I've heard council, we've all heard council loud and clear, that where we can, and where it's prudent to do so, and where there's financial resources to do so, we want to increase the public access and use and enjoyment of these flood mitigation works. And I call them flood mitigation works, so we're talking dikes and, you know, berms and those types of things, and create that trail network through that system. So that would be that objective. Number four, minimize, as economically prudent, I always caution this, physical waste and environmental impacts of physical works and physical assets retained and/or obtained throughout the program by reusing existing materials. So for example, that would be reusing possibly some of the houses that we were purchasing, or some of the aggregate material and existing dirt works and infrastructure that we have in place already, and recycling and reducing the use of non-natural materials. So bringing new materials in if we don't have to. So we want to reuse what we can. Again, you know, some would describe this as being very green. I believe in that. So recycling that process, recycling and reusing, as you would typically expect in a program like this. I will stop there, just, I do want to capture just some very quick questions, if they're specific to the program objectives, but is there anything there?
Okay, Council, you're on guard. Any questions on this matter? And I'm not seeing any hands going up at this point.
So just to summarize, Your Worship, Justin's going to look at some tweaking of the first deal?
Yeah, thanks, Duncan. So basically, just the first program objective, you know, possibly put some timeframes around that ASAP, I believe that's, you know, a given. Some seepage, there is some potential for seepage, but as I said, we'll address that comment a little bit later in the presentation, as there is other projects out there that may address that. And erosion control is something I heard from Counselor Moslin, which I think is good to include as well. And in all fairness, I believe Graham might have included that in his edits, and I didn't, we didn't get on here. So thanks, Graham, for doing that.
Good to hear that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in, in this whole process, again, and all this great stuff we're doing, I still want to hear how we're going to raise the riverside down north of, north of the highway at some time.
All right, thank you. And I'm assuming that can be dealt with in terms of the detail that we're waiting for.
I, I will say to Counsel Zalinski that I've heard you loud and clear on that, and we have discussed it internally, and I do have some strategies that I'd be happy to discuss.
Okay, Justin, turning it back to you.
Thank you, Council, or Your Worship. Just next slide. So we've talked about the deliverables, what we want to deliver in regards to the program. This is kind of leading into the how, but at the big picture. These are the umbrella statements. I always call them the kind of the guardrails on each side of the road, don't go on either side of these. So that's what these guiding principles represent, of how we're going to get to deliver those objectives. They are, and I left that out, I noticed in my presentation, so my apologies, but they are in order. In other words, what this really means is these are a decision-making framework. So inevitably, throughout this program, we've already encountered it many times, but throughout this program, we will have decisions to be made, both at a council level, or at a Duncan's level, or at a staff level, that are not necessarily aligned, and arguably somewhat counter, counteropposed to one another. So we would look to these guiding principles to give us direction as to what's most important in regards to making those decisions. That's why, actually, to a certain degree, this page is, you know, one of the more important pages in the charter, and that's why it's in the presentation today. So without further ado, going on to the first guiding principle, the elimination and significant reduction of flood risk. So design and implement effective and sustainable long-term mitigation works that eliminate or significantly reduce the overland flood and erosion risk to the residents of Grand Forks, as well as protect the residential, commercial, and industrial sectors of the city and their respective property and operations. So I know that sounds a lot like the objective, and it is, but ultimately, as a guiding principle, when we have to make hard choices, whether they're financial, or priority, or something along those lines, you know, trails versus a flood wall, this is what the first guiding principle we're going to come back to and says, does that decision or the choices that we're facing meet this guiding principle? So I just want to use that as an example going forward. Maybe I'll, maybe I'll just go on through the guiding principles, and we can, we can get back, if that works for council, just to keep going. Number two, and you'll hear me speak about this a lot, is capital preservation and optimization. By capital, I mean financial resources. I mean cash, dollars. The program will strive to preserve and optimize capital expenditures. That means be as financially prudent as possible, as well as create a foundation to leverage where possible synergistic revenue generation strategies to ensure adequate funding is maintained to achieve program objectives and maximize return on invested capital, right? You'll hear me use that term, right? That's a fancy way, and maybe to Counsel Zalinski's point, maybe a little bit too fancy, to say that we need to be prudent with our cash expenditures. And as long as we're meeting, or guiding principle number one, guiding principle number two would be to be as fiscally responsible as possible, to make sure that we have the budget available to complete 100% of the planned works, as we have them budgeted and planned out right now. So when faced with a decision in regards to cost versus a nice-to-have, cost will win out. I just, I'm putting the framework as I am giving it to you. Feel free to change accordingly, but this is the framework that I put forward. Equity amongst stakeholders. And so the program, there's multiple stakeholders. I think, at least, I think we have over 30 or 40 stakeholders. You'll see that in the operational plans and the stakeholder management plan. We have to, you know, to the best of our ability, keep most of those happy, but there are the key stakeholders which I've already spoke to. The pro, so the stakeholder equity amongst stakeholders guiding principle, the program will strive to provide a balance between all key stakeholders, city residents, first nations, federal and provincial funding partners, and the RDKB interests, as outlined in these guiding principles and the program's objectives, to ensure each stakeholder group has input into the process and are treated fairly, respectfully, and transparently. And collaboration with those key stakeholders to create win-win scenarios, win-win scenarios is to be aggressively pursued. So basically, we want to be as transparent, and equitable, and collaborative as possible with all of those key stakeholders, because without any of those stakeholders, the program will struggle to succeed. Actually, maybe just before, there's, there's two other guiding principles, but just so we don't have to go back and forth, maybe I'll just stop there on those first three, because they are relatively critical, as announced, especially number two, and just listen for council feedback relative to that.
Counsel Zalinski, and then Counsel Moslin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, my question is, I probably held it to the end, but do we have any, yes, any long-term costs, so fitting in with our asset management plan? So once all these works are built and whatnot, do we know how much more we're going to have to add to our asset management plan to maintain all these works?
At this point, we don't have a number relative to that. I mean, the, part of the guiding principle in here is natural green infrastructure, which is low maintenance. As Counselor Moslin's pointed out many times, having access to those trails to do that maintenance is critical. So where possible, if we can use dikes, berms, and natural infrastructure, that's going to be far less costly than something that is, that is of a higher maintenance, so like a sheet piling, or even a concrete structure, or something along those lines. So we're trying to do that. As for a specific number at this point, Counsel Zalinski, I don't have that. I'm just not that far.
And just to build off of what Justin said, when we get our conceptual design, and we have a better idea of what this dike work looks like, we'll have a better idea what the cost is going to be to maintain it. And I mean, not, not being here, I'm assuming council committed, you know, to some form of ongoing operational cost along with the dike, and that was traded off versus the value to the community and the protection of, of the structures within the community. The defined number, we're still working on.
Well said. And Counsel Moslin?
I think one of the things, Mayor, just a couple points. Number one, I guess I want to point out that we should not be just striving for mitigation works. We should be striving for long-term mitigation works and plans that eliminate and/or significantly reduce the, the overland flood and erosion risks. We have to come up, we are in, we are in a process, Mayor, we've seen it, of developing a flood response plan. And that is indeed a process. I hope at the end of this DMAP project, which is going to take some time, let's just say several years, that at the end of it, we come up with a grade eight plan on how to defend the community, as well as the works. Okay? So there's not a lot, there's not a lot of extra cost, but just that one, one of the goals for me at the end of all this, is that we're going to have a really defensible city, and part of that will just be a plan. And two, I guess capital preservation and optimization, I'm all for that. All this money that's being, that the federal government, provincial governments are spreading to create floodplain, I sure like some of that to stick on us. I also want to just sneak in there that land has value too. Anyhow, those are my comments. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
So just, just a quick response to the Counselor Moslin in regards to the plans. As a DMAP submission was presented, there was, there was no allowance to create a specific, which I think is what you're referring to, specific flood response plan, emergency plan. I mean, there's obviously maintenance and operations, which will be city responsibility going forward, which we just discussed. There's the EOC emergency response plan, and it's not part of DMAP. So I just want to highlight, highlight out for council that although I, that makes perfect sense to me, Counsel Moslin, it isn't necessarily captured within the scope of this particular program, just under, from a funding perspective.
My, my, my comment is, and it goes back to the Counsel Zalinski's concern, is the defenses for Riverside might not have to be works.
Right.
It might just be a plan.
I understand.
And that would be, have cost implications going forward. That's the specific that drives that, in my mind, that suggests that a plan would, would also involve maybe having a bunch of tiger dams sitting in public works. And that's, I certainly appreciate that it's different, though, from works. Okay, thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, and understood the nuances. So just go on to the last three, or sorry, the last two guiding principles?
All right.
Environmental stewardship. Obviously, the program will develop strategies that minimize environmental impacts at both the regional and local levels, that includes the RDKB, enhance and expand where possible the use of low maintenance and environmentally sustainable engineering and natural infrastructure works to meet program objectives. We kind of just spoke about this just a second ago, in regards to creating these kind of natural flood mitigation works, and the, the desire to actually put those forward as a guiding, under a guiding principle scenario. So where possible, again, just, again, this is in order, I just want to keep reminding council of that, that where possible, if I can meet the first three, then, you know, if I'm looking at concrete, say, versus earth berm or earth dike, then obviously the earth dike would be the reference here. Creation enhancement of public green space opportunities, and we spoke again a little bit about this around the objectives. The program, where optical and aligned to the other guiding principles, will incorporate and expand opportunities to enhance natural beauty of the flood mitigation works, and increase public access and enjoyment of the physical flood mitigation works, i.e. trails, park spaces, leisure spaces, and others such indirect amenities. So where possible, if we have money left over, and we can do it on the way by, and it makes sense, and it's financially prudent, then we will enhance those things, as mentioned before, the trails, the park space, and the leisure, leisure spaces for the public. So that is the order in which we will make our decisions. Again, this is just a proposal going forward. Feel free to provide edits or comments over the next couple of weeks, but that's kind of how, what I think I've heard from council, and I'm providing it back for confirmation.
Okay. You're not seeing any hands here, Justin. I'm assuming you can go on then?
Yep. So I'm not going to work, walk through all the details of the charter in regards to the risks, the constraints, and some of the synergies. I think it's all laid out there in regards to that documentation. I have talked about some of the operational strategies. I can talk about them more in the operational plans. But, you know, a couple of the ones that stick out for me is the ability to actually help the local economy out through local employment, or using local contractors. From a fiscal and budget perspective, there's possibilities to actually risk shift and use some contractual wording and procurement strategies, i.e., so for example, we'll probably need some aggregate for the dikes. So potentially, before we start the program, we make a bulk deal with an aggregate company to get a lower rate, and then try to do it on a piecemeal basis. All of those strategies there are operational designed to achieve one, if not all, of those objectives in regards to that. I spoke to one, you'll see on there, it'll say CM at Risk, or Construction Management at Risk. That's a procurement methodology, and whereby we bring on the contractor earlier on in the design process, so they can help fine-tweak that design. on in the design process so they can help fine-tweak that design, keep the budget in line, and help the designer really design something that is going to work, not, you know, when it actually hits into the field. Instead of, and it reduces the amount of change orders. Because civil works, which is what this is, earth works, is fraught with change orders and unknown conditions. So by bringing the contractor on early in the design process, you mitigate a lot of those change orders and actually ultimately reduce costs. So this speaks directly to some concerns I have heard from Council in regards to a gap, which I know Duncan's probably spoke to Council about, we'll speak again. But that's how those operational strategies are going to help reduce that gap at the end of the day. The slide that you have in front of you here today is the budget, which is the last end of the project charter. Really, if we can go just to the next slide, because this actually spans over two pages. Thank you, Kevin. I just want to point this out. This is right out of the contribution agreements. Everything above that big red bar, where it says ineligible federal DMAP cost, is all stakeholders are funding this at their dollar amount. So the total amount for eligible cost under the DMAP is just under $50 million, as you can see, 49997506. The breakdown in regards to the various contribution breakdowns are below that, as you can see. So City of Grand Forks is $3.5 million in that portion. I want to just emphasize here, because this is, this may warrant almost a separate meeting or discussion. I'm going to sit down with Duncan, hopefully this week, and walk through this as well. So there's a lot of clear understanding, because this can be very confusing. But the federal government contribution, the 19987, is capped at that amount. They will give us no more money than, as far as we know right now, and as far as what they've said, they will give us no more money than the $19 million, 987. If we look at that as eligible, so everything above the red, the provincial portion that is eligible, that they're willing to spend on, that relates to it, is $26,500,000, a little over that, $26,500,000. And the remaining gap there, the three and a half, is what takes us to the 4997, which is the cap for the DMAP. Those are what we call eligible, so that's eligible for the entire program across all stakeholders. Below the red bar is what we here calling ineligible federal DMAP cost. So I think Council is aware that the federal government implemented a policy or has a policy that says certain portions of the DMAP program, specifically the homes in regards to the buyout, just the homes, or the improvements, as we call them, are not eligible for the federal DMAP dollars. So that is what that ineligible section shows. So it shows the breakdown there in the gray section, that the federal government is not contributing any dollar amount to the $6,880,000. So obviously, the provincial government is contributing, and the city as well. So the 5.1 is the provincial government's portion, and the city's portion of that is 1.7. So from a percentage perspective, for eligible costs, the city is on board for 7% of the cost, and for the ineligible portions, the bottom, the city is on for 24%. If I weight those and average those two numbers together, not to confuse anybody, we're looking at about 10% of the overall program budget. So as you see, it's 5.52 million, 56 million is the overall program cost. That 5.2 gap is that 10%, basically, at the end of the day, so the 56,877. I probably lost a few people there. It is a little hard to understand until you work through the numbers. But I want to reemphasize again very clearly that if we add up the federal total contribution limit, which is the 19987 up above, and the provincial portion, which is just over $31 million, that comes to about $52 million. And if we can bring the program in under the $52 million, we are not hearing from our funding partners that they would have any issue in regards to that, and that, you know, the city's contribution would then decline proportionally, ultimately down to where we would have to input very little.
So, and Justin, just to jump in through your worship, we're not going to get into any great detail regarding gap discussion at this point until we've had an opportunity to discuss that and understand the numbers a little better with Council first. So we're happy to talk about the budget, or we're happy to move on, knowing that Council's probably going to see it in greater detail, you know, at another time.
Let's make applause for questions, Counsel. Do you have questions? Are you ready to move on?
Let's move on.
At that point, that's basically the summary of the charter. As I said, I'm not going to go through, because there's a lot of wording in there, and we could spend a lot of time going through each one. Obviously, encourage Council, if you have not done so, to read through the details of that charter. Duncan, I'll defer to you in regards to Council providing feedback. Is there through email, what to me?
Yeah. I mean, Counsel, the idea today, through your worship, was to get some of the principles, you know, out there. If Council sees an edit, or a word, or has a thought, definitely email it to the Council group and include Justin in that, and he'll take a look at it. And when that final draft comes forward, if a change, I'll say if a change is made, he'll indicate where that change was made and why. And if a change isn't made, then the counselor who submitted it will have that opportunity to ask why it wasn't included. So it'll go both ways, but it'll keep all of Council in. We could go through the document, you know, word by word today. That could take a significant amount of time. Really, those five guiding principles are the biggest piece that we're going to discuss today, because that's going to, you know, guide the project moving forward.
Can we get a motion on the table, Counsel, then, that we, first of all, accept, receive this information? Counsel Crogg, Counsel Thompson, all those in favor. The second motion is that we recommend it to the May 25 regular meeting of Council, which means going public. And I'm sure that there'll be modifications and changes to that. Counsel Thompson makes a motion, seconded by, we don't know, Secretary Rizner. Is there a discussion on that? Duncan, do you have any final comment?
Nope. Just as soon as we're done this, we're going to move on to that one particular discussion that Counselor Moslin brought forward, and we'll talk in generality. So we're going to deal with that.
I'm sorry, which one was that?
Johnson Flats.
Johnson Flats. Okay. All right. So all of us in favor of receiving this and passing it on to the May 25. All right. Back to you then, Mr. Rizner.
So through your worship, what we don't want to do is talk about a specific, that's the next one. So there's been some questions regarding Johnson Flats that's come forward, and timelines, and priorities of projects. And we're really not going to talk about a specific property, but we'll talk in general regarding doing works on an individual property. We're just getting the slide ready there. Yeah. So, you know, we're not really talking about specific properties, but we're going to talk about kind of, in general, if we were to move in and start looking on an individual basis. And that's part of the principles and part of that capital preservation and as we prioritize things. And that really leads nicely into this discussion. And I'll let Justin kind of take it from there.
Sure. Thanks, Kevin. So Counsel, really, the discussion in my mind centers around what do we get, what do we get for the quickest and the biggest bang in regards to the priorities that benefit the community the most? And that's really, in my mind, the key underlying question to this. I've looked at the specific areas, as you're aware of, that Counselor Moslin brought forward. You see some pictures in regards to that here. There are some challenges to doing this, but again, I want to put it in that broader framework of what is best for the community. How do we protect the most amount of the community in the quickest amount of time in the right priority? Before I just jump into this, I would remind Council, and this will be in the operational plans that come forward, is that we presented back, I think, the last committee of the whole, priority of projects and the methodology of how we prioritize projects across the program. Because we can only do certain, you know, we have all these constraints, as I've identified in the project charter. So given all those constraints, what projects do we do first versus what projects that we do further down the program? So the result of that was actually protecting the downtown core and some of the industrial infrastructure, just because that is a key economic driver of the city. That was the recommendation brought forward. Again, that is up for Council to change and amend how they see fit. So within that perspective, this particular area that we're talking about is actually residential, so doesn't fit necessarily within those top two priorities, but also the amount of protection that we're talking about here. So the area that we're looking at here is potentially three, maybe even less, possibly two homes there. So when I look at this from a technical perspective, and please forgive me, I will be a little technical here, it's the area is, the issue is erosion control in a bank that's sloughing in around Johnson's flat, relatively particular homes. As the river crushes that corner in the slide that you can see here, I think everybody will probably align to the fact that, you know, the river probably goes faster on that outside of that curve. That's just the way physics work. And so it's pushing up against that bank, and it's causing increased scouring right in those corners where those blue lines are. Now, particularly the property that we were, that Counselor Moslin has addressed, they are experiencing a lot of erosion in the backside of their property as the river kind of scours away and it falls in. I have some pictures of that a little bit later on. But ultimately, in speaking with some of the residents there, you know, obviously, everybody aligns that we want to do something in the emergency, but really, what's the best thing to do here? They would like to put some rocks and some erosion control mitigation things there as soon as possible, but there's some challenges to that, some technical challenges to do that as a one-off. If I put rocks in that area, which is shown here in those white bubbles, circles, that could potentially cause a reorientation of the river flows and the forests associated to the rivers. And please, I'm not the river expert. We're going to be hiring those types of people. But I know enough to say that that could potentially cause even more increased scouring, not necessarily at the property you're protecting, but at the one just north of it there, where you see those kind of half moon crescents. And so by just doing this without, you know, kind of a plan or a process or part of a broader strategy, and without doing proper analysis, then you may actually cause another problem of greater magnitude than what you're experiencing right now. So just keep that in mind. The other issue that we have here is access. So this particular property is probably a good 10, if not more, 12 feet above the river. The bank is sloughing in at quite a steep angle. So accessing the back of that property on a one-off is going to be very challenging. And I'll address that in regards to some guidelines from the provincial government coming up here shortly. But just keep those couple of things in mind as we walk forward. The yellow section that you see here, again, is, as I bring up the following slides, that is probably the best access. It would be a long though river, not through the back of the property, but you would actually have to create a roadway there. And that's basically what that yellow section represents, a trail where you could actually get the equipment in there to access this property to do those flood mitigation works. So that's a challenge, because you're actually now involving a neighbor, potentially two neighbors, and then obviously working in streams. That brings in a whole other raft of permitting, which I'm sure Council is probably tired of hearing about, but it is a real challenge. So I'll just keep that in the back of mind for perspective, and then we'll just move on. We'll look at the particular property.
And that's bank stability, Justin?
Bank stability.
From working above, you don't have the bank stability.
Exactly. I'll address that here, just coming up from the province. But this is the property in question. You can see it's quite a steep slope. Sorry, I actually thought I took another extra slide. I've got two slides. Can you just go to the next one there? Yep. This is basically just a little bit better, but it does give you a sense of where the buildings and the structures are relative to the bank, and the angles that we are talking about. So obviously, that scour is happening in and around those stumps there. It has. Most of that, in speaking with the homeowner, was a result of the 2018 flood. You know, it will continue to scour, but that will be directly proportional to the amount of fresh ex in the force of the river, et cetera, et cetera, as we go forward. You know, I haven't been back. I was there about a week ago. I haven't been back since, but, you know, this is something that maybe we could monitor and just see how much erosion is actually occurring. But in speaking with the homeowner, the vast majority of the property that was lost was during the major event. Okay? And now, keep in mind the space there and access and the machine that I would need, and I'll speak to that in a second, in order to get up on top of that bank, or even a dump truck to roll boulders over that bank and cause some sort of erosion detected. It's a real challenge. Just flip forward from another perspective. This is kind of looking up from the bank. I've walked all along that. It just gives you a sense of basically what's occurring down there. You'll see in the left-hand side, there's a bunch of stumps and old vegetation there. They're actually protecting the bank reasonably well, just given their, you know, their root depths and stuff like that. It's not a permanent fix by no means, but, you know, most of the erosion is occurring where there isn't actually a roof system or a structure in place. So we've spoke about, you know, potentially wanting to do something, and that we're talking about doing it from above. And that's really where the homeowner is to say, well, can't we just, you know, dump stuff over the bank, rocks and all the rest of that over the bank? And, you know, there is no access to really get a machine in there. And I think last time, he mentioned, you know, possibly going through his garage and back. I want to just bring up the challenges of doing that. These next slides are all kind of interspersed, but if we can just go to the next slide. This section, Section 7.1, is right out of the design guidelines for the Province of B.C.'s riprap. So riprap, as you know, is large boulders, erosion control. I'll just let, I'll just give Counsel a minute just to read this right out of those guidelines. Just let me know when Counsel's finished. Does anybody get a chance to read that little excerpt? So I think it speaks to exactly what, you know, ultimately the homeowner would like to see, but the challenges associated to that. And I just want to just dive down and deep dive in that just a little farther. So I'm just going to ask Kevin just to flip ahead a slide. So on the right is a picture of the property that we've been discussing, very similar to, again, right on the left-hand side, a picture, a graphic out of the riprap guide and what we're actually talking about doing, and the size of the equipment that we would need to place the rocks appropriately in this location to do this, do this design properly. As you can see behind that machine, they've had to build basically a trail for that excavator to walk along in regards to the river, so they could actually get there. The size of the excavator, if you're not familiar with it, is a 220. That's 22 metric ton excavator. It needs to be that big to place the size of boulders that we need to put in place and to dig what we need to dig. You would need that size of excavator to sit on top of the property to reach over and have the reach to actually put the rocks in the river in the right location. So you've got one or two options. That's assuming you could get the excavator in the backyard if you wanted to. But again, that brings, as you read, all sorts of fraught with issues in regards to risk and banks sloughing in and everything else. A 22 or 220-sized tachy excavator basically equivocates at 22 metric tons. So to put that in proportion, that is almost the same weight as all the Tiger Dams from the Kremmer properties that you were talking about at the last council meeting. So I would strongly advise it's not feasible to bring that excavator into the back of the property. Any smaller excavator wouldn't work, because it wouldn't have the reach and the capabilities to put a rock in the right place. Dumping rocks over the bank, as they've noted, is not often a waste of time, quote unquote. You know, one of the things they do possibly say is you could put boulders on top of that, on top of the bank and let them roll in naturally. But again, you wouldn't really understand how you would impact the river and potentially make things far worse. So I just, we're just going to go back, let's go back one slide, Kevin. In order to do this properly, this is the typical revetment, again, right out of these design guidelines. You'll notice there, first thing, that what we call the angle of repulse, which is basically the angle of the dike, is at two to one. That is, you know, quite, you know, it's not very steep. And you saw the bank in the pictures. So in order to do that properly, if you wanted that type of repair, or even if you were trying to do that as an emergency, you'd struggle, because it would be so steep that the rocks would just continuously fall down the bank and actually out into the river and cause all sorts of issues. I don't want to belabor this point too much, but this all assumes that the Department of Fisheries and permitting could happen. And that's a big assumption massively right from the get-go. So what is the solution or what is the recommendation? Ultimately, Johnson Flats, the flood is in the, in this area, along that entire bank that I showed you. Maybe you can just skip back to one of those pictures there. Actually, the one just below it, Kevin. Actually, the one after that slide that you're just on. Sorry. That entire bank that you see down there is part of the DMAP program and to put in the revetment process down there. But based on the fact that this work is actually only protecting four homes, five homes in that particular area, further down, it would protect all of Johnson Flats from a flood perspective, but relative to this area that we've been talking about is, is four or five homes here. You have to balance that, I think, against possibly something else where we're protecting all of downtown or all of North Ruckle or arguably even all of South Ruckle from a residential perspective. So it's really that cost benefit of how much work do we do versus priorities in regards to how much infrastructure and residential community that we can save. Johnson Flats is scheduled to be in the third year, so it is one of the, I hesitate to use lower priority, they're all high priority. But when I base everything else on that analysis at least, Johnson's flat would probably need to go through another two freshettes of risk before we can actually get to this relative to that. Now, if council, you know, would like to change that or change those priorities, that's absolutely up to them. But hopefully what I wanted to present today was some of those technical challenges of doing this as a one-off or a unique scenario. So at that point, I'll stop talking because I've, I've probably talked enough, so.
All right, we have a question from Council Moleson first.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. And I know when I'm going is stone uphill, I've seen it before. You know, this, this feat of a big excavator in the river, we did accomplish in this, in February, March of 2019. And council did support saving South Ruckle by putting a revetment in, in place. I believe it was about 900 meters of it. So I know we have the machinery and the men and the equipment, I shouldn't say just men, but the operators and the equipment and the materials at hand to do it in Johnson Flats has been demonstrated. I do not see much of an impediment for a road construction, especially if the landowner is willing to see access through private lands. And I guess the other point is, is basically all we're trying to do is what we're, this is scheduled to be done. This work is scheduled to be done within DMAP. It's part of the original grant, it's within the works. All that's ready being argued is that we move it up a year to prevent it from going to four, three or four freshettes. And to bring it in, you know, to try to have it, protect it as soon as possible. This specific case was why I was trying to bring up those general points in the hunger of discussing the deciding objectives, the guiding principles. Anyhow, I still believe that we should make an effort to protect lands, existing lands as soon as possible. Thanks, Your Worship.
And Council Zelinski and then Council Crowe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as Council Moleson said, this piece that we've seen is still, it's been applied to DMAP, we've been given funding, and it's going to happen at some point in time. Is, is that what I heard?
Correct.
Okay. Council Moleson, I, it's on the map. You're, you're right, you should get it done at some point in time. There are a lot of people along the river that would love, love large rocks to protect their property. Erosion is, is part of the natural thing of the river. Justin mentioned the cost benefit to it, but I'd sure like us to keep that in mind because there's a lot of people upstream that are having the same problem and aren't even included in the funding and are going to have serious problems, especially the way it's evolving this year. So it's just an understanding that, that there is, there is winners and losers in this type of work, and we've got to make sure we get enough winners in, in the group for the costs.
Thank you, Council. Thank you. And then Council Crowe.
Yeah. For, just for clarification, the works that were done in South Ruckle, where they did bring in the excavators, that type of thing, it was a contractor that did that, but they had easy access to start putting the rocks in. Then they could climb on the rocks and extend them more. So I don't see this on the property, but if the owner is willing to have a road foot through, if there's a way that you could dump the big rocks with the big excavator once, and then once you've got kind of a platform, go in with a smaller excavator and maybe smaller rocks and just start building a road that you're driving over. So you would end up with about a 16-foot wide riprap. That's it.
Thank you, Jennifer. And back to you, Duncan.
So through your worship, we're going to proceed with the charter. You'll see that at the, I think it was the May 25th meeting, Justin. You'll see the May 25th and you'll see that operational component. And again, we'll probably want to walk council through that as well. And again, if you have any language pieces, you know, tweaks or corrections, please flip those to Justin, C C Council Group. And we'll, some of those will be included, and if they're not, you'll definitely have an explanation for why they weren't.
Thank you. And we don't have this as an item on the agenda, so we really don't have a decision to make here. This was an information item.
Correct, correct. So we're on to the next item, if council's ready.
Thank you, Councilman.
Moving on to the investment policy, eight oh nine, financial services. And back to you, Mr. Reverend.
Sure, we'll bring Juliet up and, and we'll roll in. So something that I'll highlight is Daniel and I were chatting regarding policy and policy development. And we were talking about having this in the committee of the whole and then having it again at the regular meeting for approval. And, and it came to their attention, we don't really have a process for that public feedback on policy, so you will, you will probably see a, it sounds funny, but you will probably see a policy regarding policy develop, uh, development in the near future. I know it's, it sounds ludicrous, but ensuring that there is a public process to get some of that feedback before council actually moves to adopt the policy. So for intended purposes today, you see it today in the committee of the whole, and then you'll have a full two weeks before you see it in the actual regular meeting for approval. And we'll work on ironing out a bit of a process moving forward after we move through these policies. With that, I'll, I'll kick it off with Juliet. We have some, we have some funding, we have some money we know is going to be available in the bank. And as, as Justin talked about, we're going to focus a little more on the gap as we move forward with this project. And this has kind of triggered an investment policy and making sure we get the best bank for our buck.
So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so yeah, we've had, this has come up in council meetings before that we had the discussion that we need to move ahead with this because we are holding a significant amount of cash. The community charter actually lays down the, the parameters for what kind of investments we're allowed to invest city funds in. So, so those are incorporated into the policy in section six, I believe. So as for the rest, it's pretty straightforward. There's the statements on responsibilities, council's responsibilities, the C A O's and my own. And of course, the, the types of policies that we can invest in and, and some parameters regarding what type of rating we'd be looking for and the mix of investments that we would hold in a portfolio. So the main objective here is to protect our capital, reduce our risk. Secondary to that is liquidity. And finally, the third priority is, is actually written on investment.
Yeah, I think through your worship, the idea is, is we still need to support local, and that's still a goal, and council's, you know, indicated that all along. We also want to make sure we get the, the best bank for our buck as well. And so spreading that out and looking at new opportunities or different opportunities while also managing some, some flow here. We also, a question that's come forward is regarding operational. The intent isn't to, to invest, you know, operational funding that, that is needed. It's not a week-to-week investment program. You know, we want high, high-yielding accounts. However, we're really talking about, you know, reserves or surplus that, you know, there's an expectation we're not going to be spending for a significant period of time that would allow for some yield. And we're talking significant, maybe six months to a year.
Questions? We have Council Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for that explanation, Duncan. That was one of my concerns, was the word operating. And it looks like there's a lot of, a lot of work that we're creating. I'm just questioning, since that, since this is the council policy and our only employee is the C A O, I looked at number four, delegation of authority. And just wondering whether the reading should, the authority to manage the city's investment program is delegated by the C A O to the chief financial officer? Whether or not that's more in tune with what we actually do?
Yep. Through your worship, definitely a valid point. And Juliet's kind of tried to cover that off on number five through B, saying, you know, she's going to manage it, but essentially she'll come back through the C A O for investment recommendations. We can tweak it if you like, or if council feels that that covers it off, whichever you prefer.
Yeah. All right. The only other thing is our investment parameters. Personally, and this is again a personal thing, we've got AAA all the way down to triple B. I would like us, this policy to include the first two, but not the last two. Just to make sure, I know we've got limitations to legislation. But I'd rather just stay with AAA and only rated investment.
So I would, I would defer to Juliet and maybe regarding M F A. You know, we've really tried to mirror some of the M F A pieces, but Juliet, I don't, I don't have any comments on that.
Just that I did take these from, you know, from what standard practice in other municipalities. And just, so the, the actual descriptions that go along with these ratings are triple B is adequate and A is good and the other two are superior. I would have to check into this a bit further, but we may be limiting ourselves if we.
Sure. So what we could commit to, Council Zelinski, you know, when we come back on the 25th with this, with policy, we can have a little bit of language as to why it was removed or why it remained in there, and maybe answer some of those questions, if that's okay?
And I think that the, the ratings may be limiting us in terms of local business and choices we make.
Yeah.
Council Thompson is next on the list.
Thank you, Your Worship. I like the policy as it is. I don't have an issue with leaving under clause eight, the A rating and the triple B rating. And I would put forward the resolution that the committee of the whole recommended council approve policy eight oh nine, investing in surplus funds at the regular meeting on May the 25th.
And we don't need a second or for that motion. We're in the committee of the whole. Council, can I call for the question? All those in favor? Close. Harry, is there anything further on this matter? I know that everybody's getting tired here and would like us to move on.
We will move on.
We're moving on. So this moves into the 25th. Council Zelinski has his hand up. Council Zelinski patiently waving at them.
Thank you very much. Just a process on our, our new format for our council policies. I was hoping in that header, if, for future reference, if we could get the actual resolution to adopt the policy. So if you could probably include that in the header, just be able to follow things through that we'd actually have the resolution number when this policy actually.
Yep. So through your worship, I'll just ask Daniel to comment on that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I do agree with, there, there could be a spot for it somewhere in the, in the policies for having the resolution number. I've seen it with other municipalities where they have it within the, the body, like towards the end usually. Where, because in, in the event that council wants to amend a portion or wants to make an exception, you have a section for resolutions. And I believe, actually, my original template, we just leave it out because there has to be no amendment resolutions, but we can make this as a standard for even when the resolution gets passed, right? I would, I would do it at the body at the very end of it. But if, like, like I say, it's standard in other municipalities to do it. We just haven't done it yet.
Yeah, I guess my point being is when I look at the header, that's where I get all the information about the document. I, I find it confusing having to look at the very bottom of the page to find out how many revisions there were. So clean that up, I'm sure.
So are, are you after the revision numbers then, councilor? Like, or at the revision date? Or are you after the resolution that actually enables the policy or amends the policy?
Well, my suggestion, if we put the resolution, whether it's current, amended, or whatever, if the resolution, the current resolution that updates it all, if that occurs, we, we can track, we can backtrack quite a bit. Right now, this, this policy established May 11th, great. It might not get passed till two years from now. It probably won't, but just to follow through the policy, that's all, just a paperwork thing.
Yeah, and we would, we would actually change the established date to the day it gets passed by council. So it will, it will say May 25th going forward. Like this, this was, originally, there was some confusion in-house about are we to bring this to the regular meeting? Are we bringing this to the committee of the whole, as, as Duncan was pointing out? So we're, we're trying to streamline that process too, but the policies when they're passed are supposed to have that, that date or, or so. But we'll look into it.
Yeah. So ultimately, something you always hear from me is, well, you know, council's governance and policies and bylaws. Well, this is a policy, this is completely within your wheelhouse. And so if you want to see it in a certain way, we will definitely do that. Because this is, this is where I'm continually pushing you to, so.
Okay. And if we vote on that, council votes with motion?
Yeah.
Sure. And I, and I guess the only question I would have is, I just want to ensure before we do a bunch of work on, on templates for policies, that, that everybody's kind of on the same page and and everybody is okay with making some tweaks to try and make it clear.
I am.
Perfect.
Great.
Great.
Right, moving on to the fire service operations. And that's the end.
That's the hot seat. So, so through your worship, this is, you know, on the lead off, George is going to run with this one. This is really our service establishment bylaw, for lack of a better word. This is, this is how we establish the service that we have, what we're going to deliver. It also alleviates some risk that we may have in what services we're delivering and and maybe we're providing swift water, or maybe we're not. It outlines kind of what we're going to do or standards. George has done an excellent job in pulling this together. So it's very clear and the risk city, uh, city's risk is mitigated.
Perfect. Thank you, Duncan. And good afternoon. I was going to say good morning, but we've been here for several hours. So good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Through the mayor, yes, it's, it's a revised policy. The first one came out in July of 2016 when the playbook was first established. So really what I wanted to do was kind of expand the existing policy, give it some more clarification and clear direction on, on what we will, will be doing. One of the other things I incorporated, as Duncan mentioned, or mentioned, was the the adding of our services that we provide. So that's in addition to the playbook services of the full-service level. So those complement the full-service level. Also, right now, we currently provide swift water rescue technical service. Also, right now, we currently provide Swift Water Rescue Technical Service. So what I'd like to do is go from Swift Water Rescue Technical down to Swift Water Awareness. As mentioned in my report, there is redundancy here. We've got Grand Forks Search and Rescue that 13 or 14 members trained up for the technical certification, so it's really redundant. This will allow us to focus on other areas of training and become more proficient in them. So I think I've explained it pretty clear in there, and in the policy, are there questions on it?
We have Counselor Thompson first, and Counselor Zelinski.
Just a point of clarification. Does this also have to be approved with the regional district? Is this a regional district because we're a shared service?
Well, we provide services to the regional district. So ultimately, and correct me if I'm wrong, this would be your say.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is our policy for the services that we provide?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Zelinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I make a request that we forward it to the R D K V for comment? Anytime someone adjusts the level of service for me, I always like to know.
Yep.
Absolutely. There's also, again, a numbering thing that kind of confused me, is that final one dash A1 mark and how everything's numbered there.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So explanation on this, the fire chief created the report and the policy on an old format, and we caught it in kind of the final preparations for the agenda, adjusted the policy to the current format, but we missed in one section within the report, I think I missed taking the dash A1 out. So it should be basically policy 901 with a revision version at the very bottom, right, following the approval of council, and would say revision version two dash current at the end of the date, while the old policy will get a rescinded mark on it.
Okay, I guess the thing that caught my eye was on the second page, top right-hand corner, it says page two of two, and then you go to the next page, and you've got three of three, so I don't know if I'm missing anything.
Yep, we'll correct that.
Thank you.
Counselor Moslin. muted.
Attorney General, just a question. This service has been deemed redundant, okay? For what period of time has it been redundant? And that question is, for how long a period of time has the Grand Forks Search and Rescue crews been able to also provide this service?
Thank you. Through the mayor, Counselor Moslin, both the last two years.
I guess that's my concern. I see that we do have now 12 or 13 volunteers in place to provide this service. I do, my concern, I guess, is about longevity of that group, and their stability, being able to provide the service, and taking the service out of the hands of the fire departments, put it in the volunteers. Especially this time of year, kind of ironic, we come forward and ask to reduce Swift Water services. Those are my comments. Thanks, Mayor.
I'd like to remind Counselor Moslin, we have talked about this for two years, and you know, I believe that this is the formalization of a transition that's been going on for some time. So I totally understand why it's coming forward at this point, which may seem inopportune. And back to you, George.
Okay, so I just want to reiterate too, that there is, we do have mutual aid with Grand Forks Search and Rescue, so that is another organization that we would call out if needed.
I understand that Search and Rescue have fairly solid provincial funding at this point, that there was some discussion of them being removed from it. We ourselves, as the council, kicked in money at that point, but I think they have reestablished a fairly solid provincial funding.
And so I'll just jump in. And through your worship, I mean, something that not everybody is aware of, but it's always good, it's a good point, is, you know, cities aren't required to provide any firefighting services at all, and really, this is capturing what services we're providing. We're providing firefighting services, full service, we're entering buildings, you know, and all of these decisions reflect on our insurance rates when it comes to the firefighting and our abilities and our capacity. All of the additional stuff, emergency medical services and rescue services are really over and above, and these are things that have morphed or fire departments have adapted as a lack of other service providers in the community, and there's an expectation. And as we kind of move forward, all of the services we provide have a cost of maintaining training and maintaining infrastructure, and it also has a drain on our resources. The more calls we respond to, the more difficult it can become to get volunteers out. And so we're always trying to manage that, work with other groups. If there's a competent group that's delivering that service, then we're working with them and maybe providing some equipment to them, or mutual aids, or et cetera, to work together and alleviate that pressure on us.
Thank you. All right, counsel, the resolution here is basically to accept this for information, et cetera.
And move to May 25th.
Move it to the May 25th regular meeting for adoption. Do we have that motion? Counselor Krog, and Counselor Corlick, all of those in favor? All right, and moving us down to the monthly highlight reports, and again, throwing it back to Mr. Rippon.
Sure, so through your worship, we won't, we're taking a significant amount of time dealing with some fairly large discussions, and so I don't think, I don't think we'll get into great detail in the monthly highlight report, but moreover, if there's specific questions, we can answer those questions. And so the first two that I had on my list are for Morris, and maybe we'll bring him up first, and that was regarding tree lights that came up earlier in the meeting. And there's also been some discussion regarding campgrounds and what that looks like, so maybe we'll get Morris to pop up. And then if there are any other specific questions for Morris or anybody else, we can kind of move into that, if that's okay.
Okay, Counselor Zelinski is going to wait until we hear from Morris.
Perfect. I will say, I took the opportunity on Friday to drive downtown and noticed all of the lights in downtown Core, and they're very beautiful. It's very nice. Town was very quiet at 9:30, but it was very nice. Go ahead, Morris, if you want to just talk about the tree lights and just be specific to the document.
Yes, through the worship, to Counselors Zelinski. I was talking to our municipal group, the lights that were taken down were from the trees that they have pruned this year, and at this point, I'm not sure if the lights have owned back up, I'm not sure the protocol is, so I'll have to move into that.
Okay, Counselor Zelinski.
I would like to see those tree lights back in there. They were purely nice. I don't know with pruning whether that can happen, but my suggestion is, when that does happen, could be, I don't know how to put this, we need, we need a female's touch. Those lights were thrown in there by a bunch of linens and... My wife rags on me all the time, so when they do go back up, please, a little more artistic.
Noted.
Nice. You have another question for Morris, and just more of a impression from my mind. What do you know about our gravel pit? Whether there's resources there for our flood projects? What's it deep and used for now?
Through your worship, Counselor Zelinski. Actually, I was up to gravel pit last week for the first time, and I got kind of a overview of it, and I can't really give you a answer on that, what's available up there. I'd have to look at it more and get more detail from the crews.
Yeah, so, and through your worship, this is something that I was aware of, and so we do own some property that has gravel on it, and I'll get Justin to comment here in a minute. You know, the volumes that are available, if council wanted to go down the road and get into the gravel pit business again, because it sounds like we were kind of in it a number of years ago, and there may be some other flags, you know, if we went down that road talking to Dee Dee, but if we were going to get into that, we'd really want to understand those volumes, and we'd really need to know what the provincial expectation was going to be if we were going to start using that resource. Justin, I know we've stored some material there.
We have, we do have some material stored, probably not enough. A lot of this, again, will come down to what the ultimate final design of those mitigation works are. If the question is also centered around capacity to deal with the flood mitigation works, and we have three kits that are able to provide the material, and again, we have existing material in situ that we haven't touched yet, so if it's a capacity question, then I think we're going to be okay. Keep in mind that the actual material used needs to be processed to a certain specification, so it's not like we can just take it out of the bank. There is a process that we need to undertake, and so if we do that ourselves, we would have to...
Pressure.
We'd have to do it, yeah.
So it's, Counselor Zelinski, I mean, it is something that we should maybe keep on the forefront in the future, but I don't know that today it's necessarily needed, or that we have enough information to make the decision on it.
Thank you.
Thank you, and Counselor Thompson?
Just very quickly, does the city still own a crusher? Because I know when I worked in the city, we used to crush our own gravel.
No.
No, no.
No, we do not. That's the consensus around the room.
Thank you, Counselor Thompson.
So just a quick, to address the question regarding the municipal campground and what that looks like, Morris invited me out to a meeting last week with Public Works, and just with the lead-hands and coordinators, and we had some discussion, and essentially, the province is going to come out with some best practices for campgrounds, washrooms, et cetera. They've already indicated that. We haven't seen that, but as soon as we get that information, and council deems that we're prepared to open that campground, we could turn it around. I think the guys said around a week or two, we could have, I think it's a week, actually, we could be up and running.
Yeah, we could probably even quicker than that.
Yeah, so right now, the holdup, I won't say the holdup, but what we're waiting for is some policies and some guidelines from the province around those campgrounds, and they've committed to having those out to us here in the next couple of weeks, it sounds like.
Okay, and do we have a motion to accept the monthly report? Anything further? Just a moment, back it up a bit, here we had Counselor Zelinski, I didn't know that your hand up there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got more questions for other departments, so other than Morris' question. If that's correct.
Council seems very excited to hear.
Updates on when we might have a workshop on our G I S system, or mapping system?
So what, so through your worship, I don't know what this request is, because I wasn't here when it came forward, and I don't know that it came through a resolution. So I guess my first question would be, what is council looking for as far as a workshop?
Okay, and I don't know if it's council, I think it's Counselor Zelinski, but we'll premise it that way, but seeing as our G I S system, or knowing what assets we have on the ground and have on map, is tied very tightly with our asset management program as far as how much we have out there, what's the value of it, how much we should be putting away. I want to have some confidence that when we put in a new dike, that it is put onto the G I S system, it is costed out, and it rolls into our asset management program. So I know our G I S system has been in the works for many, many years, and I know we don't have very good maps, especially for utilities underground. So I guess where I'm working too, is, again, making sure that we're putting money away to upgrade our assets in a timely fashion. And I don't see that right now, but our G I S system and our mapping system is very tied to gold and dollar values. And so just a learning for myself, and what other counselors want to learn also, as far as when we take a 22nd Street upgrade, we can see the old road depreciated, we can see the new one put into the system, and now we're going to have to replace that, whether it's that, whether it's the lift pumps at the industrial lift station. And now we have a new asset that we're going to have to put money away to make sure that it's in good condition. So that's sort of where I was at, whether other counselors want to see that or not, I don't know, but it does come down to individual property taxes, how much money we're putting away to make sure this structure is staying in place.
Okay, I'd like to indicate that I would not be interested in that workshop, and I expect that as an operational information thing that I can go and ask for without having to double-check or to understand how a G I S system works. And on to Counselor Moslin.
Thanks, Your Worship. I was just, you know, I want also, I'd like to point out that as someone who has access to the city's G I S system, I really appreciate it. It's certainly a work in development. It has come a long way. I think some of the intent of that original discussion was that, you know, counselors have an opportunity to give feedback on how they use that system, you know, and as we are constantly talking, anyhow, Your Worship, contrary, as opposed to you, I'd always like to attend some sort of workshop on that. Anyhow, those are my comments.
Thank you, Counselor. When you pull your ear like that, I know it's a secret message. Did we have any further hands out, or can we vote on this? We're going to accept the monthly report. All those in favor? Gary? All right, before we go to the last item, which is the late item, did we have anything from Les Johnson and the media contact?
Not that I can see, and I can't read Facebook right now, so I can't tell you what's happening there.
I'm not seeing anything on the Facebook feed here.
And we're moving in on three hours here without a break, and I would open up in the discussion verbally of the community or courtesy kitchen, and I pass it to Mr. Rippon.
Sure, and I'll ask Dolores, maybe come on for this one. So I've sent council quite a bit of information on this, and in short, what I'm going to talk about with Dolores' help is really around, you know, defining and appreciating that we've been in this meeting for three hours and there's some more to go, we'll keep it succinct. So, I mean, essentially, defining this type of use, whether it's courtesy kitchen, whatever it's titled, that's not common, but we can definitely do it. Often, it's a secondary use within, say, a social services building. It's not very often a primary use. However, we can define it, and we would define it by saying, you know, essentially, this doesn't fall under a restaurant and is a separate use. Having said that, anything we do moving forward has no real impact on existing, and really, what we're doing is defining this and either placing it in a zone or not identifying a zone but defining it, which results in spot zoning, or is also known as, you know, a case-by-case evaluation per request. And we can do that moving forward, and right now, there is a resolution, and I don't think I actually, well, maybe I do have it, you know, to define it. So that's the road we're moving down. I just wanted council to be clear that this doesn't impact any existing, defining impacts future uses and future decisions. So I've sent a lot of information out on this, I probably won't get into any more detail. We'll take some questions, if that's okay, Your Worship.
You bet, and Counselor Zelinski, and then Counselor Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I guess, back to your comment as a mayor, as far as we have an educated taxpayer out there, and they're no dummies, I guess. So when I read the definition of restaurant, and when I look at our bylaw that says these uses and no other uses, and when staff tells me that they fault buys a restaurant because they're charging for meals, and then I read in the paper that, no, they're not charging, it basically asks, do they comply?
Thank you. Counselor Thompson? Thank you. Councilor Thompson?
And my question, building on what Councilor Zelinski asked, do they require a business license? Melissa Shuja says, no, they do not, because they are only a nonprofit.
Correct.
Correct. But they do have to comply with zoning.
Correct.
To require a business license. But I think this is a group that we should value, that are, one of the standing groups that reaches out and really touches a very sensitive area of our community right now, which is the availability of food. So I certainly appreciate the kind of work they're doing there. I understand that you prefer their clarification in future, if that's what council's desire is. But at this point in time, I really want to recognize the good work that that group is doing. And Councilor Crogg has his hand up next.
I'll wait to see if anybody else wants to say anything.
So I think, Your Worship, if I may, the only comment I will make is, Dolores and I walked over to the building here last week, I think it was, or the week before. And we did confirm that they are still operating the same way that they submitted their application under. So the same things that they indicated when they submitted their application, and were told that they fit under restaurant, is the same way that they're operating today. And so they received that approval. And, you know, so they're conforming, we can define it, we can shape it, change it moving forward. That'll, you know, impact anybody moving forward, but the existing is in place.
Councilor Crogg, last chance?
Yeah. Yeah, it's not a restaurant. Everybody knows it's not a restaurant. That's fine, whatever. They have to follow all the guidelines. Concerning to me was, they're saying they're not using the Gospel Chapel kitchen, and they don't need IHA to certify or say their kitchen is okay. When they first started, they were just, everything was cooked, brought there. Maybe they had a soup pot or something to keep things warm, but that was it. But now it sounds like they're actually cooking on there. And they haven't had the sanction from IHA. And if they're cooking, does it require our fire inspection to go back in? Because they're actually doing physical cooking now.
You know, Councilor Crogg, I think with the detail we had from Melissa Shuja, that they are complying with all the public health and health regulations, I would be very surprised to find that they are in violation of any public health orders, including the staying safe and separate, but also the preparation of food. I think they've covered that, that's right.
No, but they changed it. They changed it. Just like you read where it was, this came from them, not me, that they're not using the Gospel Chapel kitchen like they said they would. And they're not doing just a straight older handout, they're actually cooking food. Right? They say they don't need the gospel because they're not cooking grease.
So we...
But any other kitchen has to have certification from IHA.
Yeah, so just...
So grease is around about the same thing. Just call them in, if they say it's okay, then it's okay.
So I can answer these questions for you, Councilor Crogg?
Okay.
So just talking with David, we did inspect with fire and with building for food preparation? And it is our understanding that they do have approval?
I've got a copy of their approval from IHA.
So interior health has provided them approval, and we have a copy of it?
Can I see that?
Sure, we can send that out to all of council, if that's council's role?
Yeah, I just want to make sure.
Okay. Have we satisfied your concerns, Councilor Crogg?
Sure.
And I don't see that there's a motion on this again, this is for information?
Couple of questions still.
Yeah, yeah.
I have, yes, Councilor Studley, and then Councilor Corlick. Councilor Studley?
Hey, yes. So I see this is sort of a gray area. It's not just your standard open bill, restaurant, your standard open bill, hotel, your standard open bill thing, where you just put it in one of those only boxes, whether it complies or not. You can just go this black way, you don't need a map box or not. It's definitely a gray area. So I'd like to see more of that sort of gray area stuff come through council for a decision, goes to just sort of going underneath whatever closest thing it goes to.
All right, thank you, Councilor. And then Councilor Corlick?
Yeah, when you're talking about coastal distancing, it's been my observation, and I've been observing, they're not securing that. Because they sit forward at tables, and I know that, because I've watched. So, you know, I kind of was back on this, it's kind of a gray area. Need doesn't fall into any position. We do have to clean it up somewhere. You know, I know it's too late to go through grandfather name and all that stuff, but let's move forward and get something done that's a little more defined and clear in what people are, anyone is arguing.
Councilor Corlick? I see Councilor Moslin and up there.
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I too have to speak in favor of this establishment at this point, providing a level of food security to our community. I think it's a fraud area of the community we'd like to admit. However, I do have a lot of empathy with, and frustration with the process of trying to provide definitions. It seems to me that if we have been able to work on these definitions a year ago, we would have a lot more to say in what goes where. Now, my motivation for providing a definition is so that we can provide the service. So that the service isn't snuffed out. But the service has a designated or approved area where it can go. That's my motivation for providing definitions. And I am quite frustrated, you know, with an official community plan and public engagement somehow in the age of COVID, ahead of this coming year, putting off these definitions, and yet again, is only going to lead to future frustrations. Thanks, Your Worship. That's my comment.
And then Councilor Thompson?
Yes, thank you, Your Worship. I agree that there needs to be work done and definitions revamped and improved. But I guess my question is, has council offered any recommendations on to what they would like to see in the definition, what recommendations for the improvements? Because I want to be able to work with our staff in developing these. And I don't want to be seen as doing something that's making a resolution or a definition that contradicts or, you know, precludes certain definitions that are already existing. So I think we need to move carefully. But I think we need, as a council, to give feedback for, you know, a positive feedback for what you want to see, what we want to see included in those definitions. And I think that would be a great value to our staff.
Thank you, Councilor.
May I, through your worship, can I just, can I not build the plan maybe moving forward, if that's okay?
Thank you, Dr. Thompson.
Sure. So right now, we have a resolution in front of us from last year that says we need to define a community kitchen. And so that's what we're going to do. But because we're moving into the OCP, we probably will not designate a zone for the community kitchen, and we will leave it essentially zoneless moving forward until it can be integrated into the bigger plan in the OCP. Now, Dolores and I met last week and discussed the OCP and that process. And our next step right now is to get an RFP, or a request for proposals, out for somebody to deliver the OCP. When we get that person in place, the first thing they need to do is meet with council and understand the scope of the work. Because I don't, it's not clear to me, and in speaking with Dolores, we think it would go a long way in having whoever that person is or group is that's going to develop the OCP, having that first meeting with council, workshop with council, to find out what your expectations are and where we're going. So the first step is, we're going to follow through with the resolution. We're going to define community kitchen, but we're going to leave it zoneless until we have that bigger discussion around the OCP. And if this is where the update on the OCP is going, then we don't want to put something in place that's going to change a year later or a few months later. So, you know, not putting the cart ahead of the horse. Those are the next steps, and our intent is to get that OCP RFP out as soon as possible and get somebody working on this. It's been outstanding for a little while, and we need to move forward now that the province is, you know, relaxing some of the rules. We feel like public engagement may be an opportunity, whether it's digital or in some other form, in the near future. So that's the next step, that's the plan anyway. I don't know if that discussion's happened before.
Thank you, Doc. And you got your hand on the wheel?
Someone.
Okay, Councilor Zelinski, turn the racket, grab it up there, Councilor Zelinski.
Yeah, you got that, Mr. Mayor. Just maybe, I was just looking at it this morning, Duncan, I think it's back a couple pages of the official community plan, where there's principles and goals. And that might give you an indication of stuff we haven't dealt with. The one that caught my eye this morning was the air quality group and whatever happened to them. So that would be a good place.
Councilor Moslin, tell us what happened.
I'm still here.
That was a big job over a number of years, Councilor Moslin, put that all together with the nebulometer, right? Is that the term?
Yeah, that's one of them. And I think there's still a, oh gee whiz, I forget something. The G home device on Thomas City Hall.
Right.
It's reading through the G.
Right beside it, there are ten cameras. At this point, do we have anything from...
Okay.
Nothing from the fireplace?
Nope.
Nope?
Nope.
Okay. A call for an adjournment, you can have a motion for adjournment. I see hands there, Councilor Studley, sorry. Leading a term, so...